Thank you very much and welcome back, everybody. We are in the Committee of the Whole for the District of Squamish. And today is Tuesday, March 26th. We are on item four one of our agenda, which is our annual update from the RCMP local division. Thanks so much for being here. I'll pass it over to Staff Sergeant Gareth Bradley to introduce himself and his team and walk through the presentation. Thanks for being here with us.
Yeah, thanks for having us. I'm Staff Sergeant Gareth Bradley and I've been with the Squamish RCMP for 11 years now, which is exciting. And I have our new Police Services Manager with us, Kimberly LaBrenns, and Sergeant Dallas Langley, who will be giving the presentation today. Yeah, thanks for having us.
Yes, good morning, everybody. Thanks for having us. I appreciate being able to present the RCMP review for 2023 to you. Ultimately, most of you know sort of what the RCMP structure looks like here in Squamish. Ultimately, the Sea to Sky RCMP is a hybrid-integrated detachment consisting of Bowen Island, Squamish, Whistler, as well as Pemberton. The corporate services and oversight function is consistent across the Sea to Sky with independent policing services out of each individual detachment. As most of you know, throughout the Sea to Sky in 2023, we conducted a series of town hall meetings, gathering input from the public and yourselves in terms of what we want to look at for strategic priorities with our strategic plan, which is going to span the next five years. Ultimately, what we do is we look at this plan on an annual basis, just to make sure that the RCMP is on track and to make sure that these strategic priorities are still relevant to the community. In terms of the Squamish RCMP leadership team, I'm sure most of you are already aware of everybody who's on that team. Again, Staff Sergeant Gareth Bradley had highlighted Kimberly LaBrenns, who is now the new Police Services Manager, who will oversee operational support from a municipal position within the detachment. So looking here, this is the organizational structure of the Squamish RCMP as it sits right now. Ultimately, this is just going to be for reference. I'm not going to go into the actual organizational structure, but if you have any questions, please feel free to ask after. So going into some 2023 crime statistics, I'll start with property crime. Ultimately, in 2023, we saw a increase in property crime with significant increases in fraud-related offenses. Many of these offenses included elderly persons as vulnerable victims. What we're looking to do with these circumstances is to engage our Community Response Unit to provide education throughout the community in terms of presentations and also working collaboratively with local businesses to promote awareness of these frauds. Going on to violent crime stats, ultimately, we had almost a 24% increase in 2023 for violent crimes, with a significant portion of those being sexual assaults and intimate partner violence offenses. Now, ultimately, these numbers might look bad. What I would say would definitely account for a lot of these is we've spent significant amount of efforts over the last year, making sure that our officers have trauma-informed training practices to best support victims. Additionally, we've worked collaboratively with a lot of partners in town, including places like Pearl Space, VCH, Under One Roof, to determine how to best support victims, so these people are actually willing to come and report these crimes to police. In terms of Mental Health Act occurrences, generally across the board, we saw significant decreases. In one instance, as you can see up there for Under One Roof, there was almost a 50, almost a 60% decrease in actual calls for service to that location. Again, a lot of this, I think, would be very representative of the strong relationships that the RCMP has been building with its partner agencies, VCH, Under One Roof, community groups such as the Community Resilience Committee, the CAT Community Action Team. Through these committees, as well as the Situation Table, which kicked off in 2023, and crisis meetings with the Squamish Nation, we've been able to identify high-risk persons in the community, provide support and a plan to actually support that person before they get to a point of crisis, which is generally when we're seeing a lot of the calls for service come into the police. In terms of road safety and traffic, we actually saw a decrease in overall collisions in 2023, as well as fatal collisions. Although the stats would reflect that we actually had eight more deaths due to collisions in 2023 as opposed to 2022, and most of these occurred on Highway 99. For 2023, there was a big emphasis from the RCMP on impaired driving enforcement initiatives. We conducted a significant number of impaired driving check stops, especially on long weekends and around like Christmas time, resulting in, as you could see, a significant increase in the number of immediate roadside prohibitions that were issued. In several instances, there's multiple officers in the detachment who were successful with locating 25 impaired drivers, completing the investigations, which actually makes them eligible for the Alexa Award that's given each year within the province. In terms of other calls for service, these would be obviously less serious calls for service, things like breach of the peace, cause disturbance, intoxication in public places. Overall, we saw a decrease in most of those areas across the board. For overall calls for service, last year's Squamish RCMP saw a slight increase for overall calls for service. You might notice on there that there's 24% fewer charges that were actually laid in 2023 as opposed to 2022. These are, of course, criminal charges. These stats in themselves aren't that unique in that we actually noticed this across the Sea to Sky as a trend, with Pemberton, Bowen Island, and Whistler actually reporting similar types of stats. What I would like to do is I would like to highlight some of the significant investigations that we did have in 2023, though. The first one I'm going to start with is a motor vehicle collision, which actually happened in 2022, in which a pedestrian was struck on Cleveland Avenue, ultimately killing the pedestrian as a result of the collision. Much investigation occurred between September 2022 and November 2023. This included crime scene analysis with our partners iCars, DNA analysis through RCMP forensic lab, support from the E-Division interview team in order to actually interview witnesses and suspects, as well as a number of ITOs which were written for production orders and search warrants. Ultimately, the general investigation section within the detachment really went above and beyond on this file to get to a point where formal charges were approved by Crown. The suspect has since been arrested and released, and then the matter is before the courts right now. But this was a significant investigation that literally took hundreds and hundreds of hours to get to a point where Crown was willing to actually go ahead with the charges. In another matter, less serious, but still just as relevant, a prolific offender was on a crime spree in town, swinging weapons at people, breaking planters and signs and hitting vehicles. Ultimately, we were able to locate this person, arrest them. We submitted a comprehensive bail package, which ultimately removed this person from the community. He's currently on conditions not to come back to the District of Squamish. This one was significant just because this person had such an intense hate from online social media. The person's name was absolutely everywhere, so this was a significant apprehension or arrest in terms of public perception. What I'd like to do is also highlight one of the investigations that our Special Victims Unit handled. Over several months in 2023, the Squamish RCMP identified a high-risk domestic offender. This person was causing offenses against their ex-partner, including stalking them all the way across the country using GPS devices, social media, and other electronic means. They followed them all the way to Ontario. Ultimately, the General Investigation Section, along with General Duty Officers and Special Victims Unit, worked collaboratively with multiple RCMP detachments throughout the Lower Mainland, as well as Vancouver Island, the Ontario Provincial Police, as well as several specialized sections within the Toronto Police Service, through several warrant applications and surveillance. Ultimately, that suspect was arrested in the Lower Mainland. They remain in custody, and that matters also before the courts. I'd also like to highlight a couple weapons offenses that were brought up or happened in 2023. In one instance, contrary to a release order, the RCMP ended up seizing 19 firearms from one individual. This included 11 restricted firearms, one prohibited firearm, and seven non-restricted firearm. Along with that was 8,000 rounds of ammunition, a set of body armor, and other parts related to other firearms. A total of eight firearms-related offenses were laid, and this matters also before the courts. Additionally, one of the Community Response Unit members, while they were out patrolling, doing day-to-day rounds, they actually located somebody in a public place downtown with a loaded shotgun in their backpack. Once again, the suspect was taken into custody, the firearm was seized, charges were laid, and that matters also before the courts. I think with these significant investigations, one of the most important things that this highlighted is how invaluable the operational support staff was within the detachment. With significant investigations and many recent changes to disclosure requirements for the Crown Prosecutor, recent case laws, our frontline investigators are becoming bogged down endlessly with hundreds and hundreds of hours of transcription, disclosure requirements, and that's really taken away our capacity to take on new investigations. So the frontline support staff was absolutely instrumental in making any of this stuff happen. As far as community outreach in 2023, we exerted a significant amount of effort to make ourselves present in the community as much as we could be. The Community Response Unit, along with several General Duty Officers teamed up with School District 48. We are in many schools throughout the community on multiple occasions, providing presentations and education to youth in terms of healthy relationships, online safety, as well as drug use. Additionally, we completed several presentations to the Law 12 class here in town, basically giving them an overall sense of what does a police officer do and is this a career option that they might want to look at somewhere down the line? Through this education, obviously, we built a significant number of relationships within the school system. Those relationships have been absolutely huge in having kids being willing to come and report offenses to the police, where they may have not felt comfortable in the past doing so. We also attended a significant number of cultural events with the Squamish Nation this past year. This included putting up new signage at Kwam Kwam or Defence Islands, as well as paddling with youth and foundry representatives on September 30th for Truth and Reconciliation Day. Additionally, members were also introduced to the Squamish Nation lands and culturally sensitive areas with the help of Integrated First Nations Unit Constable Kelly Dean. This included several members actually taking part in sweat lodges, which was pretty significant in building those relationships. Additionally, Staff Sergeant Gareth Bradley was also successful in a civil forfeiture application for a grant. That grant is being used to fund the completion of a carved welcome pole, which will go in the front entryway of the detachment. The actual carving is being led by Art Harry, a Squamish elder, and that carving is taking place between Art, several members of the Squamish RCMP, and several youth who are in the Indigenous Leadership Program at Don Ross School here in town. So every Thursday, the students, along with Art, will come to the detachment. They'll teach about Squamish Nation culture, how to take care of carving tools, and then we actually work collectively to carve that pole. It's expected that the carving will be completed probably by June of this year, with the pole being raised sometime before the end of summer in the detachment. Throughout the community, we also held a number of recruiting events and career days. This in addition to other events like Coffee with a Cop, where citizens were able to come to the Adventure Centre, sit down with us, talk about any police-related issues they had, or if they just wanted to discuss, you know, their day-to-day, whatever they wanted to talk about, we were there to talk to them about that. I think one of the events that I'm most proud of this last year, obviously in conjunction with our other first responder partners, was cram the cruiser, fill a fire truck, and sink a ship, which happened in 2023. Through that event, we raised a significant number of toys and food for Operation Christmas Care. This was obviously hugely significant, given the financial restraints or constraints that people have right now in the community. I'd definitely like to thank everybody who took their time out to attend that event. There are a lot of very prominent people within the community and representatives from many agencies who came in and either donated or spent the time to help assist with the event. I'd also really like to thank Walmart for hosting us. Ultimately, we needed a space to have that event, and they've been so gracious as to host us the last two years in that location. In terms of community partnerships and seasonal policing, in 2023, we continued with a significant number of backcountry patrols, patrolling for illegal activities, illegal fires, which is a huge concern right now, obviously, with the environment that we live in, as well as other firearms-related offenses. This was usually conducted over long weekends, or when we knew a lot of people would be in the backcountry for recreating. This was also the first year of the Situation Table. The Situation Table is a collaboration between the RCMP and other community support groups. Through the Situation Table, we identify high-risk persons in the community, and then collectively, we talk about how to best support those persons, so that we can help them before they get to a point of crisis or before their situation actually gets worse. Additionally, Staff Sergeant Gareth Bradley has been working with Vancouver Coastal Health on the neurodivergent mentorship program. This is an absolutely brilliant idea in terms of building relationships with persons that might otherwise not be comfortable with police. Through this program, representatives from Vancouver Coastal Health, care aides, and neurodivergent persons are able to actually meet with the police to build those relationships. And then through that, we also discuss what are the triggers for this person if the police happened to be called to them in crisis? How can we show up to this call and not cause more trauma to this person, but still do the job that we need to do? And that's an ongoing project that is really exciting. I look forward to it this next year. Additionally, we had a lot of partner joint operations with Bylaw, Marine Search and Rescue, Ground Search and Rescue as always, as well as other patrols in the backcountry. What's new for 2023, going into 2024, in November of 2023, we started the Mental Health Investigator position within the detachment. This investigator forms part of the Community Response Unit and will work directly with a mental health nurse. This team will provide proactive help or proactive support to people in the community with mental health issues. Again, addressing those concerns, breaking down barriers and building relationships in order that we can bypass that person getting to a point of crisis again. Additionally, I'd like to really thank the District of Squamish for the creation and funding of the Squamish Police Services Manager position. Obviously, Kim is a huge part of the detachment, and we couldn't be happier to have her in that position. Ultimately, with the creation of this position, not only does it bring our organizational structure into alignment for future building within the detachment, I think it certainly allows for increased capacity to best support frontline operations going forward. This is going to be extremely important with the implementation of new transcription software and video systems within the detachment, as well as, I'm sure most of you have heard, body cameras are going to be coming in the near future. What this is going to cause is going to cause a significant amount of extra disclosure that is going to have to be prepared and disseminated to Crown prosecutors in almost any file that we attend to. Ultimately, this is going to put a huge burden on frontline resources, and that's where that operational support is going to have to come in to really support us in that matter. And then the last thing would be the implementation of the Sea to Sky RCMP Strategic Plan for 2023 to 2028. Again, this is something that's reviewed annually to make sure that we're on track. Ultimately, we are going to have more town halls to focus those priorities and make sure that we are actually focused in the areas where the community wants to actually see us working. I appreciate everybody's time here. If anybody has any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thanks so much for the presentation, and I'll actually just get you to turn your mic off. We can usually just have one on at a time. It's a bit of a dance. But thanks for the high-level overview for all the work you've done over this past year, and I'm sure that there's lots of questions around the table, so I will open it up to counsel who would like to kick us off. Counselor French, go ahead.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks for the presentation today. Thanks for the great work that you do in our community, work that is unfathomable to me. I just have so much respect for what it takes every day for you and your team to do what they do in our community. So I'm interested a little bit in how calls to Under One Roof and the overdose prevention site are differentiated or not. When there is a call to that part of the community, is there a specific differentiation between the two locations?
Yes, absolutely. So any call for service that we attend would be differentiated strictly by the address of the occurrence. That aside, if an address can't be determined, ultimately, the investigation may reveal where the incident actually took place, and that'll be reflected in the police file.
Okay, great. And I was happy to see the statistics around the effective partnership that has been formed with the folks that operate those two places, leading to the decline in the statistics that we saw in the report. Has me then thinking about the hours of the overdose prevention site. I've heard anecdotally from people who are doing the work that RCMP assisted calls are happening more significantly when the overdose prevention site is closed. So I'm just, I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about your policing experience around when the OPS is open and when it's closed?
Go ahead, Staff Sergeant Bradley.
Yeah, obviously, it's a partnership in time and with VCH and operating hours. We do obviously respond to folks and calls for service outside their operating hours and times. Would I have the actual numbers of the amount of times? I'd have to go back and research that for sure. But yeah, I can, we do, it does default to us as a 911 call. Ambulance asks us for assistance, or the general public just asks us to go out and check on somebody or outside the operating hours.
Okay, doesn't quite hit what I'm looking for. However, I'll give you the context for the question. It's my belief that the OPS should be open more than what it is now, and I believe that if it operated longer hours, we would see you folks being called to that area less often. I have two more questions.
You can have one more.
Okay, I'll take one more. Now I have to choose. Okay, let's go with Coffee with a Cop, I think, is a great program. I'd like to see it happen more. Is that something you plan to continue to do?
Yeah, absolutely. That's one of our foundational ventures in October, that's the kind of national coffee for a cop a day set out. But yeah, we look forward to actually like doing some kind of mini-town halls on various types of topics. I think fraud is clearly something that we need to work on, something with our senior citizens and elderly in the community to better prepare them, also doing some business outreach as well. And, you know, a lot of the times, folks will come out with several thousand dollars' worth of iTunes cards or certain types of things that the businesses really need to get on board to kind of like go, do we have the proper checks and balances in place like that? So really looking forward to our community team that's now in place, doing some excellent work this year, so.
Thank you, and I'll come back to you if we have time. I just want to make sure everybody has a chance for questions. I'll go to Counselor Hamilton, then Mayor Hurford.
Thanks very much, and I'll echo Counselor French's. Kudos. Thank you for the work you do, and thank you for the presentation. You've mentioned this, the increase in fraud over in 2023, and clearly, there's a local aspect to it, perhaps the victim of the fraud or where the iTunes cards maybe are spent in town. Do you know, is the origin of the fraud localized or more global?
Yeah, the origin of most of these frauds are pretty tough to determine. A lot of times, it is coming from an overseas source, especially with the introduction and prevalent use of artificial intelligence. Right now, I think what we're seeing is a lot of these scams in the past are much more elaborate than they ever have been, and a lot of the messaging that's going out is pretty tough for people to determine whether it's legitimate or not.
Thanks, and with that, I can see why it's important for your efforts to prevent fraud, being education as opposed to enforcement, because you don't have control over that, over the international community. A question on how, what are your greatest challenges to do an even better job for our community? What are you finding the limitations, and what should counsel, what should we as a council be considering to help you move forward more effectively in 2024 and 2025?
Yeah, that's a good question. Thank you, and we really appreciate the resources that have been allotted for the Squamish RCMP. That's going to have a tremendous effect. We're in the process of filling those spots as we speak. So we've had six, or will have six as of April, new members come into the detachment with under your service, so that's a challenge for me to bring everybody up to speed over a period of time. But it's good. It's good to have young, eager people to come in and balance that out. I think with the tech that's coming out and our stressors inside from an admin perspective, just the time to do transcriptions and things of that nature, I think those would be some pressures that we're going to see when things come online at the end of the year.
Thank you, Mayor Hurford, and Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I had a similar question around the fraud piece, but I think that was addressed. It was a really interesting statistic, and I can see the challenges with that. In general, the statistics that you shared with us today, you mentioned some, like, ah, well, this one kind of, you know, it could read like this, but we're interpreting like that. How, I'm happy to hear that, say, in the fraud case, it's directing some actions, like, hey, we have some work to do here. These are things we can, in general, how do you pull apart that to direct your, the statistics to direct your planning and actions sort of going forward? Because I think there's a lot of stories to be told in each one of those numbers. So maybe you could speak to how that helps you set your priorities and any challenges with that?
No, for sure, and I appreciate the question, Mayor. Ultimately, that comes down to what is actually, what are the police officers actually seeing in the community? Ultimately, stats are ultimately just numbers. There's no story attached to them per se at face value. But within the detachment, we're seeing the stories and seeing the types of files that are actually attached to these numbers. From that, we can definitely focus our resources into activities that are going to have the biggest impacts on those activities that are causing those stats in the first place.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's challenging when we see these, and you, and, you know, I appreciate the sort of that category of assaults and having a higher number there could actually be celebrated, because in context, we've created a safe space for people to come forward and to have those conversations and have their concerns addressed. because in context, we've created a safe space for people to come forward and to have those conversations and have their concerns addressed. And so I appreciate that and anything that can be done to sort of add those contextual pieces to our discussions or broadly in the community, I think are incredibly valuable. And yeah, thank you.
Hopefully Andrew's listening. I'll go to Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. You've referred in your presentation to the Body Cam program. And this is something that has been discussed over the last several years with respect to its costs and burdens on your staff and on our budget. We, there were also warnings by review commissions a few years back on the trends that this is tied up with. I think it was the former Speaker of the House and former professor at Fraser Valley University that addressed this. I mean, an interesting report. Has or has your professional association or union taken an advocacy position on the implementation of the Body Cam program? That may be of interest to local governments. We're all interested in addressing the learning curve that's going to be inevitable. And we're going to have to see some lessons learned and how we can be more efficient with this, with an impact on our local taxpayer burden. And we do work with other local governments in advocacy, not least on or on, on issues including RCMP.
Yeah, as far as the, the union piece, I think they're very supportive of body worn cameras. It's just going to make some efficiencies in certain areas, for example, public complaints. You know, 99% of the time, we're doing a fabulous job and we need to showcase that. And these body cameras will help aid those investigations as they move forward. So cutting down on extensive interviewing and things like that, the, the incident will be recorded right there. So but yeah, it's from the MPF has come out and supported body worn cameras, but, and sorry, what was the rest of your question?
That's interesting. You're saying that there will, could be some inefficiencies involved, but there are also burdens that you refer to for your staff. Is this a matter that's come to the attention of your professional association, those extra burdens and costs of the program?
Yeah, with any new equipment ad or anything, there's going to be some ripple effects down the line. So we're just working through that process right now and trying to figure out what that, the ultimate ripple effect for the, for the districts and towns across the country will look like. We're still working through the procurement process at this time, so we'll figure that out.
Thank you. Well, that'll be interesting to follow in future reports. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Peddingill next.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation and I'm very happy to hear about the success of the Situation Table and the neurodiverse response work. It's really exciting and important stuff. And just trying to absorb it also, I apologize if I'm asking to you to repeat something, but from the perspective that the statistics don't tell the whole story and you're sort of paying attention to the actual files you see. Can you speak to maybe the key areas that you do see there needing to be some focus in terms of crime prevention or response over the next year or two?
Yeah, for sure. I think ultimately, we want to continue focusing efforts on the mental health piece and working with our partners because a lot of the statistics that we have in some way or another end up leading back to mental health issues in the community. So that's a huge, huge factor that we're going to keep focusing in those areas. One of the areas there in terms of overall crime and stuff that I didn't touch on was, was thefts with an increase in bike thefts specifically, which is obviously of significant importance here in the town, things like that. And with the implementation of our crime reduction unit, or sorry, community response unit, is they're going to be carrying out a number of projects from this point going forward. Now that they're essentially almost at full strength, we're going to be able to see projects related to focusing on bike thefts. You know, thefts in general around the community, and I think that's going to have a significant impact for us. That in, of course, with the increase of, in officers, thanks to the positions that the district approved, will obviously increase the, the overall presence of, of the RCMP within the community and allow for us to, to expand out to, you know, areas where we may, we may not have enough resources to generally be able to stray that far, right? So.
Thank you. I have a few questions of my own, then we'll go back around. Counselor French, you might have time for your lingering question. My first question and kind of following on perhaps some of Counselor Peddingill's questions, just around capacity and vacancies. So we have added some additional force in our current budget. We just did our review of our 2023 carryovers last year and there was $800,000 for the RCMP. And so I'm just wondering if you can speak to some of the ongoing challenges of vacancies and recruitment and where that stands both within our detachment as well as kind of against the backdrop of the broader province.
Yeah, thank you. It's a vacancy pattern is a significant issue. People move on and have career aspirations, so we allow those folks to, to leave. And then filling those has become a challenge, specifically here's surrounding housing. And people are interested in coming, but once they start to, you know, kind of look at the, the area, it's like, oh, well, maybe that's a little bit out of, out of touch. So we are getting, that's why we're getting a lot more folks from Depot, filling those spots and filling those needs. And last year was a significant pressure, probably the, the most increased pressure that I've seen since I've been here in 11 years, which is contributing to some of those numbers. That, that number is a snapshot in time and it's a forecast. I've actually got an updated number, which is closer to around 300,000, which is pretty standard. But there's a few members that have been off long-term ODS. One was injured in a file last year, so it's taking some time. So as you know, or don't know, but as soon as they hit a 30 day window, they go on to a different co later and the District of Squamish stops paying for that, for that salary. So that's kind of where that kind of comes up and down as it goes throughout the year.
And thank you for that context. I think it's important just to keep in mind as we continue to figure out how best we resource the detachment and the various sources and the challenges that we're facing. I know it's not just in our community, but our community is particularly challenged, so appreciate that context. My other question was just around data trends. I know, I think a few years ago, we kind of shifted how we collect data. And one of the challenges with this presentation is that we just see 2022 to 2023. And so we end up with potentially headlines that say a 400% increase in robberies. But that was a change from zero to four. And so, I know, sorry, I'm picking on you, Andrew. But is there a possibility to have longer term trends for some of these stats in our presentations going forward? I think that for me, that would be really helpful.
Yeah, so that there was a change in about 2021 where we started keeping our own stats internally. So as files grow older, they purge. So it's not going back to like COVID times. It's not necessarily, you're going to capture that raw data. So that's what we started in 2021. So from now on, you'll, like next year, you'll get 21, 22, 23, 24, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, it will be more wholesome moving forward and we'll capture the, the real, real data that you guys are looking for.
Fantastic. That's great to hear. My last question is around the Wood Fiber Project and the resources that that is taking in terms of both involvement in current emergency response planning. But also I think that there have been some concerns or at least some hearings in the community around the presence of some of the folks from the Industry Community Response Group of the Provincial Arm. And I'm just wondering if you can speak to the process of when those folks might show up in our community if they have to date or if we might expect them in the future.
Yeah, I can speak to that. Yeah, we have ongoing, obviously, discussions with all the industry groups that are coming to town. We need to be prepared and we need to have planning and connection. So that's been ongoing for years and we're moving forward with that process on a, on a monthly basis to, to keep that connection going. We have our own operational plans that are being drafted locally. And I'm putting together resource teams that we can be more effective and selective and more efficient in, in dealing with our own local issues and not relying on outside teams. Obviously, we are a small detachment with limited number of resources. If a situation requires extra resourcing, then there's an internal process that we go through and ask. They're not randomly coming up and doing patrols or anything like that, if that's the concern. So there are, will be some training and exercises going on, but that's all a normal part of the process for our operational planning, so we can work through the, the challenges and gaps and close and bridge, bridge some things that we need to, to look at.
Great. Thank you very much, Counselor French. I'll go back to you and then I have Counselor Hamilton on the list.
Thanks. It was asked and answered.
Easy. Go ahead, Counselor Hamilton.
Mine was also asked and answered. Thank you, Counselor. It's honor.
Opening up some space. Go ahead, Mayor Herford.
I'll move receipt of the report and then speak to it if it's seconded.
I had two more questions. So I'm going to take us right to the end of the presentation time. You mentioned in your presentation, the mental health investigator that's come on board at the end of last year. Is that the CAR99 program? Is that the same component? And can you just speak to that a little bit more in terms of how you see that rolling out?
Yeah, for sure. So the mental health investigator, ultimately, that will be from an RCMP perspective, that will be termed CAR99. Ultimately, that investigator will work with a mental health nurse from Vancouver Coastal Health. Vancouver Coastal Health is still in the process of identifying the person on their end. Ultimately, that nurse will work hand in hand, working out of the actual RCMP detachment with that person. That will be proactive referrals, attending to community support groups to determine who are the people that are at risk in the community. And then developing a plan on attending to speak with those persons or working with other community groups to determine, you know, maybe we do have a role in this case, maybe we don't. If we don't, who is best able to support that person? And that's sort of how it'll roll out going forward.
That's super helpful. Thank you. And then my last question was just around road safety and I apologize, I missed the mayor's drop in last week. But as you folks are aware, we are doing some public engagement around reducing speed limits across the municipality. I'm just wondering if you can speak to the breakdown of resourcing of provincial resources versus municipal resources when it comes to road safety and how you folks manage that internally?
Yeah, so the, the province sets aside, we have three provincial resources on our frontline. And those are designated to a mixture of frontline resourcing and seasonal policing outside the district boundaries and vice versa. Sometimes if there's a two member response, then we need to go up and do that outside the, the boundaries. But regarding road safety, the ICBC and the province put together quite a bit of funding for us to do winter tire checks and different distracted driving initiatives. And these, usually every month, there's a new initiative that comes out that there's a focus of, as well as provincial agencies, agencies like URSU, the Integrated Road Safety, use it, sorry, I know acronyms. Integrated Road Safety Unit come up and do enforcement along the Cedar Sky Highway on a given weekend or several times during the, you know, busy periods, things like that, whenever their schedule allows. But yeah, there's lots of, lots of different things that are going on from the provincial level that are providing support to highway and road safety.
Thank you for that. Mayor Herford, over to you.
I'd like to move receipt to the report and I'd be happy to provide comment if it was seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Hamilton. Go ahead, Mayor Herford.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation today and really for all of your, your and your team's work throughout, throughout the year. The, the task that you, that you folks have is, is, is large. And I, and I really appreciate the transparency of the reporting. And I, I do think that in, in Squamish, we're particular, we're particularly just the openness really of, of your, of your organization through the various initiatives that were in the presentation, including sending someone and thank you for the mayor's drop in to represent you as we have discussions like community around safety and the role of the policing can, can play in, in that. And yeah, so thank you for, for all your, all your work and the presentation and the, and really leading on things like the CAR99 piece, the neurodivergent work, I think is really, is really great. And I, I think it also speaks volumes to your commitment to, to truth and reconciliation and the ties that the RCMP and Squamish have and continue to cultivate with, with our local First Nation is, is really remarkable. So thank you so much for, for all your work. And I think you do a great job of upholding our community's values. Thank you.
Any further comment from counsel? Counselor French, go ahead.
Thanks Chair, and just speaking in support of receiving the report, I wanted to share how encouraged I am to see the integration and the cooperation between healthcare and law enforcement. You know, traditionally in the past, we've really siloed those two things inappropriately. And what I've seen over the last number of years and looking into the future is those, those barriers, those divisions fading away. And just increased cooperation, which I think leads to more effective policing. And it's so encouraging for me to, to see the word neurodivergent in your report because it speaks to empathetic law enforcement, which is something that traditionally we don't think about. And I see more and more of that empathetic language and it's a very encouraging trend that I support.
I'll just echo my counsel colleagues' comments of thanks for the work, for the way that you show up in our community and the empathy that you bring to the work that you do. All while building connection across community and doing it when you're under resourced and trying to bring new staff members up to speed on how their jobs work. It's not an easy task at the best of times. And when you're doing it in an under-resourced capacity, it can be even more challenging. So I just want to recognize the amount of effort that you folks go above and beyond to make sure that we all feel safe. Definitely some stories behind the stats, behind some of the investigations this past year that were a little bit eyebrow raising, I'm not going to lie. But it's also important for our community to know that's the work that you are doing. And thanks to, to Kimberly and your team as well for supporting. The amount of admin that is now going into police work is eye boggling and I don't even know the start of it. But having folks like you able to support the good work that these folks are doing out on the streets is, is invaluable. And so the teamwork that you have developed and, and are able to foster within our RCMP detachment has been really phenomenal. And so thank you for that ongoing work. And we look forward to next year's report with hopefully data trends in the right direction. But thanks for being here today for the update and some of us will see you on Thursday for the SLRD version of this presentation. And with that, thanks so much. I'll call the question. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks so much. All right. We'll do a motion to close. That's a good start. Moved by Mayor Herford, seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Any opposed? Motion carries. And we'll take a 20 minute break to close down the room and grab lunch, which I think is coming in. I think I saw Victoria run out. It'll be here at 12. So we'll come, we'll come back at 10 after. And then that'll give us 50 minutes to talk about that conversation.
Wonderful. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome back. This is the committee hole for the District of Squamish for March 26. It is currently 1:00 PM and we are on item four, five, one of our agenda today. With a delegation from Karen Clark, the Executive Director of the Squamish Community Foundation. Here to provide an update on the 2023 Community Enhancement Grant Process and I will pass it off to Ms. Guest first. And we'll make sure Echo's gone away. Fantastic. Thank you to introduce. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Council. My name is Devon Guest. I'm Acting Director of Recreation Culture here for the District of Squamish. And we're here today to review good work by our community partners, Squamish Community Foundation. Who on behalf of the District administer and adjudicate community enhancement funding. Provided by Council in alignment with OCP Principles and District of Squamish bylaws and policy. And while staff can continue to work with both of our granting partners to improve process. Today is about celebrating the good work from 2023. An example of staff's commitment to process improvement is the upcoming Community Partnership Policy Analysis and Review. In which the Community Foundation will play a part of and will endeavor to address the gaps that currently exist in the process. I'd like to welcome Karen Clark, Executive Director of the Squamish Community Foundation for a presentation and discussion. Cheers.
Thank you and welcome, Ms. Clark. I'll pass it over to you.
Thank you, Council, for having me here today. It's nice to be back again a year later. To talk about the 2023 Community Enhancement Grant Process. So I'm just gonna get this straight here. The next one? There we go. So as said, I'm the Executive Director of the Squamish Community Foundation. Which was established in 2004 to create a legacy of giving in our community. We manage a growing portfolio of donations which are contributed by individuals, corporations, and organizations. And we contribute to the betterment of the community by providing funding to local nonprofit organizations and individuals. That are creating positive change. We manage donor funds. Which are reinvested into the community through granting programs that support important community initiatives like culture, health, and the environment. And we have, we run a number of other granting processes as well that through our own grant. Granting and also through federal grants and whatnot as well. So to date, we've administered over 1 million in granting since 2004. So the 2023 process for the Community Enhancement Grants, we received a record number of applications. There were 32 applications and a total of 266, $563 in granting requested. And just to give you an idea, we had $98,000 available, so over two times the amount was requested than what we were able to grant out. And which is often the way, and this is most often the way with most grants anyways. We had one application which we were able to defer to the Neighborhood Small Grants Program, which I'll just mention is open right now. It's open until April 12th and it's a great little neighborhood granting program that we run as well. There were three applications from Cedar Sky Community Services. And one from the District of Squamish. And I'm just pointing that out because we're, one of the topics I'm going to bring up later is a discussion around if an organization can submit more than than one application. And they're for vastly different programs for these organizations, but it's certainly something that we should discuss. Applications that like the general populations and issues that came in through the applications. So there. Some applications covered more than one area. But the highest amount of applications were for sports and the general population as well as children and youth. The next grouping was the environment, vulnerable low-income families and District of Squamish facility rentals. We had five applications for that. Outdoor recreation, vulnerable low-income individuals. Education, vulnerable low-income women and gender diverse individuals. We had three applications for seniors programming, children and youth. Charity nonprofit education or events and physical, mental health and social well-being. And then we had one indigenous youth in a community event. So those were the general applications that we received. And then. So just a little bit about the process. I feel like on the third year of partnership with the district, the process is pretty smooth. We've got great communication with the Arts Council and with district staff. So the process was pretty smooth this year. Some of the types of, or the types of programming that any application has to meet is deconciliation reconciliation. Intergenerational programming, enhancement of neighborhood connectivity. Environments, equity diversity and inclusion, supportive physical health, mental health and social well-being. Youth-led initiatives, programming that supports Squamish's vulnerable populations and recreation programming. So. Everyone had to meet at least one of those, but you'll notice in the the groupings before that we we didn't necessarily get. Applications from all of these groupings. So that's something that we'll continue to reach out to groups that we know. That support these types of programmings and make sure they're aware of the the grants. There are also eight other criteria that they have to meet. So we have a scoring matrix that we use for the granting committee. And they get these matrix things before the granting committee. I think there was seven people on it this year and we try to. Have people represented from as many different populations and as many different groups in town as possible. So the scoring matrix that they use is there's eight criteria on there, some around clarity of goals and activities. Showing collaboration and sharing of resources and community involvement. And how it supports Squamish's official community plan. And then those criteria are ranked from three to five points. So that is the results from the scoring matrices. So we ended up funding 28 groups for around $98,000. And you can see that the Squamish Food Bank was was ranked the highest and received the most amount of money this year. That year, 2023, was a bit. Tough in that we had so many applications and there's always this dilemma when you're granting as to whether to. Grant more money to less or more money to less organizations or. Less money and try and spread the money out a bit further to more organizations. So it looks like this year we sort of spread it out a bit further and there was smaller amounts of of. Money to going to groups, but overall Squamish Food Bank and the Women's Center got the two highest amounts and they were primarily for operations and whatnot. And then you can see on down what other folks got. So. Yeah. So just a review of a few of the projects. So the Brackendale Farmers Institute received some money for a youth involvement program and I'm sure you're all aware that they had an astounding attendance this year. It was a real banner year for the for the Fall Fair. They, what they wanted to do was have a youth sort of training program and. Bring them in and and get them going on certain projects. I guess due to capacity, that was a challenge for for the institute. But they still had record numbers of youth show up and and do jobs such as photography and volunteer hosts and set up and take down. And then other folks just showed up from like Coast Mountain Academy and participated via their own organizing and whatnot. So. I think it was a really great year for them and it'll probably work on their youth training a little bit more next year. It's my understanding. Squamish Helping Hands Society Recycle Bicycle Program. In 2023, they received and repaired over 80 bikes. Forty children were connected with bikes, 25 adults were connected with bikes. Two clients participated in building and repairing bikes and there were two community volunteers and a summer student. There is also some really nice community collaboration with five local partners who helped with referrals and bike distribution and some local businesses. And the picture is actually of some rotary folks who contributed a container for the program for storage and they're painting it there. So another nice partnership there as well. Cedar Sky Community Services Healthy Pregnancy Outreach Program. They, the Monday drop-in session. So normally their program runs on Wednesdays. And it gets busy. They offer lunch, they have speakers, they have all kinds of resources for moms and babies there. Some moms just aren't comfortable in that environment. So they wanted to offer a drop-by program on Monday. So this, we gave them some funding to help support that, those sessions. And so they ended up having 87 moms show up for these sessions. And they do things, and so on Monday mornings, they set up tables with donations and vitamins and diapers and grocery store vouchers. And overall, the program provides access to knowledge about healthy practices and means to access healthy foods and mental health support. It helps build resilience in new mothers and their babies, and fostering wellness, and participants build connection to services, resources, and support staff in a welcoming, inclusive environment. And the ripple effect from new moms being supported impacts the families in their community. And I can tell you, this is one of the longest-standing programs that Cedar Sky's been running. I used to help run it. And the, it's just incredible what the ripple effect that goes out into the community for for how long it's been around and what it does for helping moms have a strong environment to learn from. So the Squamish Climate Action Network, they ran some food education workshops. So they ran eight workshops with 240 attendees, which is amazing. Those are some of the examples of the workshops they ran. I know that the sourdough workshop was very popular in December. And that, those pictures are actually from the fermentation workshop shop. So they're doing really great work out there, offering up these educational workshops for people. The Cedar Sky Services, again, their Food Skills for Families program. They were able to run two sessions with the money that we supported them with, and they ran one for seniors and one for perineal moms, which, once again, it's about an eight-week session, and they they learn how to, different cooking skills and about healthy cooking skills and whatnot. It's it's another great program. I was involved in that, around that program for a while, too. So the, finally, the Squamish Environmental Conservation Society. They did some Eagle Run interpretive signage upgrades. They refurbished and reused signs from elsewhere and brought them onto the the dyke, I believe, and then did some refurbishing of signs on the dyke. So you should see some new signage there. And lastly, the Squamish General Hospital Auxiliary Society was fundraising for an ultrasonic instrument cleaning system for the operating room. And they, we helped them out a bit, and then the, they did, were able to purchase that with additional fundraising and whatnot. Oh, why won't it go? It's not moving. There we go. So the, some of the observations from this year, and some of these may look familiar to last year because it's always a work in process for a while. So we'll continue to review and update and prove the application and guidelines. We'll work with the District of Squamish to establish whether organizations can submit more than one application to one stream for different programs. So right now, we're accepting a few applications from one organization, but we don't accept applications to the two streams, to the Art Council and to the Community Enhancement Grant stream. So that, I don't know, there may be some streamlining that could happen there to be, make more clarity for applicants. What am I on? We're, work with the District of Squamish to establish clarity on eligibility for organizations already receiving permissive tax exemptions. So that's a discussion we've been having for a while. And to establish clarity around DOS facility rental requests. So right now, an organization, if they want to rent a District of Squamish facility, they put an application into us. We agree to it, and then the District of Squamish writes the check to the organization. And then those folks take that money and pay it back to the district. So we're also wondering if there's some streamlining that can happen around that process as well. Did you want to say something?
We refer to that as administratively cumbersome.
So, and then Devon already mentioned that we're going to be working on, hopefully, a partnership agreement process for the 2025 granting season coming up. So I just, one last thing, I know that we're here to talk about the community grants, but I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to mention another piece of important work that Squamish Community Foundation worked on this year in 2023, and that was the Squamish Vital Signs Report. We released that in July 2023. And let me just switch screens here. There we go. So we've had great feedback. I've got hard copies here, if anybody wants some. I don't know if we want them right now, but they were also sent in your package. So nonprofits, charities have been using it, businesses have been using it, realtors have been using it. I've even seen some stats in grant applications from it as well. And the idea behind the report is that it's Canada's most extensive community-driven data report. It leverages local knowledge to identify significant trends in a range of areas critical to the community. And so this year, so we have a whole committee, and we focused on these eight topics. So diversity, equity, and belonging, environment and sustainability, food security, health and wellness, housing, indigenous rights and step towards reconciliation, transportation, and work in the labor market. What I will say is the process, we had a great turnout. We held two community conversations, which informed this document. Great turnout for those. We did a community survey of, I think we had 450 people return those surveys, and then pulled a lot of data from a lot of different local reports and whatnot, and certainly government reports as well, and government data. So I thought, just two minutes to take, there is an interesting poll done in the Squamish chief, and it asked what was surprising for you in the Squamish Vital Signs Report. So I thought this might be interesting for you. So the highest one was the average monthly cost of a food basket for Squamish. And it ends up that a food basket for a family of four is $1,441, and that'll be found found under the food security section. And that is actually higher, it's about $130 higher than the rest of Vancouver Coastal Health Area. So we're quite high for food basket here. Another one that people found surprising were the stats on housing, which is not so surprising, I guess. I don't know which stat in particular, but I'm sure you're very familiar with them. The data on indigenous rights and steps towards reconciliation, people found interesting. And then the last one was Squamish's, oh, no, there was also one around commuting. So 8% of people living in Squamish commute to Whistler and 5% to Vancouver. I found that surprising because that seems lower than what I thought it was. It seems to have gone down over the years since when I first moved here 20 years ago, so. And then finally, people found smoking and obesity rates surprising. So Squamish has a 5.5% daily or occasional smoker rate, and it has a 16% obesity rate, which are both lower than the provincial and federal averages. So this can be found in the Health and Wellness section. But the part that I found interesting in the Health and Wellness section was around our heavy drinking rates. So they're actually quite higher than the provincial average here in Squamish. So that was interesting to me. So there you go. That's the Vital Signs Report. I'm happy to come in and chat with people if they're interested in particular stats or they want any more information on it. But overall, I just wanted to thank Council for giving us the opportunity to administer these grants with you. And also, with the Vital Signs, there was a nice partnership with the district. There was lots of information provided from the district for the report. But yes, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to administer these grants, and just thank you for offering this funding up to the community year after year. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the annual report. There is so much to celebrate in that and for taking a few minutes to point out the Vital Signs Report, although it's not why we're here. I think we could spend a full hour talking about it. I definitely reference it on a very regular basis, I want to say at least weekly, just the depth of information that is in there. And also just want to recognize and highlight the specificity and the intentionality you spent to incorporate some of the Squamish Nation components and Indigenous reconciliation. I think that that was a real big step forward in this year's Vital Signs Report and the way that you did that. So thank you for making sure that those statistics and that information is well incorporated into our overall community surveys. With that, I'm sure that there's lots of questions around the table, and I'll open it up. Who would like to get us started? Mayor Hefford, go ahead.
Yeah. And yes, thank you for for all the work in in general, Vital Signs and and so on, but particularly this this program. I remember the, I do remember the time where where this was work that we, that the council took on. And so I have some understanding of the complexity and challenges of administering it. And there's tons to celebrate here. But I do want to just touch on the, like, those challenges pieces. And maybe this is likely a question to our staff, just what processes are we going to, are underway to address that? Like, just just so that it'll help guide our conversation here today.
Thank you for the question through the chair. We have referred these to the community policy, the Community Partnership Policy Review and Analysis Process. These, some of them are easy, and some of them are a bit like an onion. And when you start to peel them back, they're a little bit more than what is first contemplated. And so that's why they exist right now in the context of the overall community partnership policy work being done.
Okay, so as with many things that are the multi-layered onions, if needed, I'll come back to council. At this point, there's process in place, and and those issues are part of whatever process is in place?
Correct. Staff, staff are not seeking a motion today, obviously, from council to contemplate any of this. If there were comments around the table, staff are happy to hear them.
Okay, thank you. I'll switch gears now. I appreciated the, the categorization of the types of applications we are seeing. Can you speak to any trends or changes over time that you've you've seen in that? Is this a departure from from previous, previous years as far as the types of of groups or initiative, groups going forward or the category of initiatives that they're that they're bringing?
No, I wouldn't say so. I think those three are actually usually the top three, perhaps in different order, from year to year. And I would say usually we get more indigenous applications. So that's work for us to do and making sure that we get more of those next year. I'd say the District of Squamish Facility Rentals maybe have gone up a little bit more this year. No, I don't, I don't, I don't see too much of a difference other than that. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. I, I, I'm trying to read into sort of community and our needs in the community that are being unmet with our other programming into what these asks are and if they're changing over time. But it's interesting to see that they're they're stable. And I guess the last piece is just in this outdoor recreation versus sport. Like, how are you differentiating between those two? When I think about sport, I think about recreation. I'm just, I'm just curious how much of this is coming from like a recreation demand and the nuances there?
Yeah, from what I can remember, just let me look at these. They, the sport is more like field-related or indoor-related. So like cricket or field hockey or swimming inside, like pirates or something like that indoors. Whereas the outdoor recreation has more to do perhaps with recreating outdoors as far as, I think some of them were nature learning. I'm trying to find the, so this was, we've already done the 2024 one. So I'm trying to remember. Yeah, so there's the Pirate Swim Club, Minor Hockey Association. So those would all be considered sport. Outdoor recreation, that might be biking one. The the Recycle Bicycle Program might have been lumped into that one. And then I think perhaps the Squamish School and PAC, that one was probably one in Squamish Team Cycling would have been within outdoor recreation. So that's the differentiation.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Okay.
Just to pick up on one of Mayor Hefford's questions in terms of the areas for ongoing discussion and process improvement. Just so I'm correct in my timing, the 2024 grant cycle is already underway and closed. And so this is really looking forward to 2025. Is that correct? And so our timeline for our partnership policy and the conversations that'll come out of that will inform the next round of applications. Is that correct?
Yeah, 25, 2025 applications. Yeah.
I saw Council Anderson's hand. Go ahead.
First of all, I'm not sure what term you used, Ms. Clark, for the community workshop for the Vital Signs Process. It's a little while back now that I attended one, and once again, I found it an especially enjoyable occasion, productive information exchange and a good learning opportunity. I really look forward to those events. I encourage any of my colleagues to attend the next round. A couple of comments on the observations that you passed on to us for our comment. Whether the, the issue of clarity on community enhancement grant eligibility for organizations already receiving permissive tax exemptions. The list of organizations who receive these objectives, these exemptions is diverse. The amounts are quite diverse, and the circumstances of these respective organizations are as well. I would feel that you might consider, or we might consider, a threshold amount, if you like, because there are very, quite a varied list there of small and small, small organizations and small amounts. And so that's my, I would, I would suggest that it shouldn't be necessary to have a blanket policy. I think that may not be appropriate or or welcomed by the community. On the other issue of working with the district to establish clarity around facility rental requests, my experience with this issue is with the Squamish Days events, which are busy for our Public Works organization. And we have some changing of the guard in our Public Works Department. So a new team will be addressing their needs and other folks as well. I guess what I'd just like to say is I'm quite curious to learn from the Public Works Department their perspective on the efficiency of the process of making requests and booking time with staff. They're often pressed, as well as my perspective, in handling community events. But I, to complete the picture, I am curious about the perspective of other aspects of that of that facility rental request process from the Public Works perspective. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments, Councilor Anderson. Any other questions from around the table? Yeah, Councilor Penningill, go ahead.
Yeah, just sort of at odds with the idea of making processes more efficient. I do wonder with the success, and you know, we're talking about, well, it's already closed for 2024. Has there been any discussion about, hey, what if we distribute the funds twice a year, about half the amount each time, or sort of more frequent dispersments in the community? Or any sort of thought about whether that would be, you know, have any impact at all?
Thanks, Councilor Penningill. I, capacity-wise, that would be challenging to run two processes per year. I guess I would be curious what the purpose of doing that would be.
I, yeah, I guess just sort of, as we're talking about obstacles and so on, and recognizing, yes, it would be a huge, sort of a doubling of workload of administering this. But, you know, for a not-for-profit, it's sometimes hard to think and plan a year ahead or, you know, and especially for small programs. Is there an opportunity for something more nimble possibly? And it's not, please don't take this to be like, this is where we need to head. I'm just sort of asking the question if this is a comment you've received, if there's been, again, any discussion or thought that maybe this is something, whether something there, or maybe it's not.
Go ahead, Ms. Guest.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. From a District of Squamish staff perspective, through, once again, reviewing our partnership policy and analysis, if that is something that we hear coming up through our partners and our stakeholders, it's certainly something that we will take away and and consider.
My general reflection on that is I don't think a lack of applications is the challenge, given the number of applications and having almost over $260,000, and we only have $100,000 to give. So I think that would be part of my question back to you, Councilor Penningill, is is it an effort to try and get more applications? My question to staff was going to be around the budget. I know that this is typically tied I know that this is typically tied to 1% of operating, if my brain remembers correctly. So how has that value fluctuated? Do we have, do we know that over the last few years? And is that number increasing or decreasing? And when do we get to consider whether that is enough to be giving to this really important project?
Thank you for that. I'd like to take that question away and follow up with council. Appreciate that.
That's totally fair. Council, any other questions around the table? Go ahead, Councilor French.
I'll move to receive the report, if that's where we're at.
Thank you, seconded by Councilor Hamilton. Any comments? Go ahead, Councilor French.
Yeah, Ms. Clark, thank you very much for your work and the work of your team. Because I know projects like these are not done by one individual. So great work by the entire team. And thanks for sharing this with us. It's it's great feedback and there's great value in reflecting back on these things and then looking forward to determine how we can do better. And that's exactly the exercise that we're going through here. And I think this has been a productive conversation.
Councilor Hamilton, go ahead.
Thanks very much and thanks very much for all the work you do administering grants like this. As you have difficult decisions ahead of you every year. And thank you for taking on that 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 difficult task. It's extremely important. I look forward to how we can work together and build the partnership agreements in ways that we can solve these standing challenges that we have in in our administratively cumbersome processes. Hopefully, we can be less administratively cumbersome through our partnership agreement policy. And I wanted to just take a moment to really thank you for the vital, the work on the vital signs. I know that's a sort of aside to this presentation, but the data coming from our community is extraordinarily extraordinarily valuable, especially after we continue to ask the same questions and get the same statistics over time becomes extraordinarily valuable for us to see how our community is changing over time. So thanks very much.
Mayor Horford, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for the for the work. It's quite something to see it sort of laid out in in this way and the impact that that it has on the community. And I know this was just the presentation today, although thorough, it was very good. It's just also just scratching the surface of the of the impact of these programs. So thank you for that. And with previous involvement where this program was administered around the council table, I really appreciate the the improvement in process of where we are right now. And 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 I like to, I like the the task of taking on that next layer of of further improving that process so that all the pieces make make sense and and don't present. Oh, I forgot the deadpan quote that was from earlier, but administratively cumbersome, I think, was the quote. So so look forward to those those next steps and continuing to see the impact of all this work through our community. So thank you so much.
Councilor Penningill, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Start by, thanks for the reminder for the Vital Signs Report. It's been a little while since I've looked at it again, but it is such a useful report. Sort of wish it was an annual one in many ways, but understand I'm pushing for more more work than people have capacity for. And just sort of back to my question and and some of the discussion around that. When I see that the impact these relatively speaking, small infusions into the community have through Squamish Arts and the Community Foundation, it does make me wonder if we need to think about the the amount we're investing in this program. You know, we know we're in and going into some years of of tough budgets. But in this case, maybe it's a reason to do more here rather than less. And so I think definitely something for us to think about as a as a council as we move forward. And and just sort of also add that I'm really glad we made the change last term to have the Squamish Arts and Community Foundation administer the grants. It seems to me that it's been a piece of of seeing a lot more really great projects move forward each year. So thank you to everyone.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Councilor Greenlaw.
Yeah, I mean, I want to echo a lot of the comments that have made around the table, in particular, the ones that Councilor Penningill was just ma- making. I love the work that you do and that you're just, your return on investment for us as an organization and for the taxpayers and our community members is just so impressive. And yeah, so thank you for all the work you do for our community. And yeah, look forward to hearing more.
I will echo my colleagues' thanks for all the work and for bringing forward this annual report to celebrate the good things that are happening within our community. I concur with Councilor Penningill that, to me, it continues to raise the question of there's such great value in in this program and and the mirrored one that we have with Squamish Arts in terms of the impact for dollar. And I think that that's where we are best suited in terms of reflecting on whether this is a sufficient amount of money. We know that it is having really meaningful impact within our community. And similar to Councilor Penningill, I want to echo the the thanks for taking on the grant administration process, not just because it means that it's off our table, but I think the process that you have outlined and created over the last few years of developing the Community Enhancement Grant Process makes it clearer, more transparent, and most importantly, non-political. It was really difficult to make those decisions around this table. And even just the snapshot of the folks that you have on the committee for choosing the successful applicants. I know that those decisions are difficult, but I also appreciate the intentionality with which you've brought committee members that are more diverse and representative perhaps than those who are sitting around this table. And I think that that's a really important piece to how we actually allocate those funds in a fair and equitable manner through our community. And that shows with the projects that are showing up and being represented. And definitely hear loud and clear that the asks are two and a half times what we actually have on the table. And I think that's the biggest one that we want to try and tackle going forward. So appreciate staff's ongoing work with our community partners in order to address some of those longstanding questions. And I think that there are improvements that we can make and we'll address those in our next round of partnership agreements. But thanks again for the work and for being here and for the report. And I'll call the question, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks so much. Council, we're ahead of schedule. We'll take a quick five-minute recess and come back at 1:45. Well, staff will be talking about the financial plan debrief. Thank you very much. Great, thank you. Welcome back, everybody. We are back in committee of the whole. And we are in item six, one of our agenda, which is under Staff Reports, the 2024 to 2028 Financial Plan Debrief. And I'll pass it over to Ms. Boxrude to get us going. Ms. Glende, sorry, I saw you there, but Ms. Glende will kick us off. Thank you very much.
Thank you through the chair. Good afternoon, Council. Linda Glende, I'm the C O here at the District of Squamish. And beside me is Heather Boxrude, our Chief Financial Officer and General Manager of
Financial Information.
Financial Information Technology and Procurement Services. Thank you. It's a new title and I'm getting used to it. We are here today, it's primarily to host a conversation with council around the financial planning process. So it's a debrief of last year's process. Ideally, we'd like to capitalize, no pun intended, on what went well for you. I know, pretty good, right? Right after lunch? What went well for for council in the process? And then what ideas council has in order to ideally streamline our process, make it more effective? And we've put a caveat around that this year, just given we've got some key vacancies in the Financial Services Team and our current Senior Financial Analyst, who runs the financial planning process, is retiring at the end of April. So we wish him well and hopefully recognize that with that vacancy and the challenging labor market that we have some constraints. So within those constraints, we are going to run a very good and solid process, but recognizing in terms of changing anything significantly, we're somewhat limited. So with that caveat, we are still very eager to hear from you in terms of what you thought about last year and suggestions for how we can make it better.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Ms. Boxrude, do you have anything to add at this point? All right, council, this is really, as Ms. Glende mentioned, a bit of an open discussion. There was a two-page briefer in our package today that both link back to the Community Feedback Summary Report from last year's financial planning process. So things we heard from the community and a few questions for discussion from staff in terms of what can the district do in the 2025 to 2029 financial plan cycle, which can streamline the staff and council process, reduce council workshop time and more effective and be more effective with districts' limited staff capacity? And the second question is what financial processes were most effective in 2024 to 2028? So let us open this up for discussion. If anybody has some initial reflections, maybe thinking back to last year, what worked well? Or things that they'd like to improve for this coming year? Go ahead, Councilor Hamilton.
Thanks very much. And yeah, thanks for the work on putting together budget, lots of numbers. I'm sure there's a whole machinery back there that we don't, we don't see. We just see the the tables coming out. One of the things, and I've I've asked for this in the past, but I'll, I will ask for it again here. One thing that would significantly increase my ability, my efficacy in analyzing the information is having a search and sortable data format in order to look through. I appreciate the importance of putting out the numbers into in a PDF format, which is searchable, but not sortable. When I am analyzing the information, it would be a significant advantage to be able to sort the information based on, you know, amount, one category, another. So simply having the information as an Excel spreadsheet, even if communicated just to council, I would find very valuable. Thanks.
Thank you for that suggestion. I am curious to hear from staff if that is a substantive, like, technical change in the way that you do your backend? Or if that's something that is like kind of more easily. substantive, like technical change in the way that you do your backend, or if that's something that is like kind of more easily doable.
Thank you for the question through the chair. We'll have to take that away. It's not necessarily that it's a technical concern. It's a process potential concern. So it's one more step in a process that has many avenues into a final product. So we'll have to take away that away. There is potentially opportunities through Questica in the future to have a similar format. Might not be Excel, but certainly something that's searchable and insortable. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And not to compare and contrast, but we are still doing the regional district budget. And it is 487 pages of PDF Excel files, which is not searchable. So there is a wide variety of how local government budgets do come together. Go ahead, Counselor Penningill, then I'll go to Mayor Herford.
Yeah, thanks. I was just going to suggest maybe staff should have sent everyone here the SLRD budget before asking about ours. But and with so with this first comment, I may have misunderstood the assignment a little bit. And my my memory about timelines may be a bit fuzzy, but I, you know, we often say the every discussion is a budget discussion. And the budget really is a talk about all of our priorities across the district. And I found really valuable, the alternative approval process engagements we had at the street, the the Open Street Day and Farmers Market and so on. I understand there's a fair bit of staff work, especially for materials for the public to consume. But in terms of value and thinking about our sort of end of the budget process engagement with with the community, I think those sort of ongoing things with maybe not all of council and all of staff, but a few key people every Saturday are incredibly useful. So if there's any way to incorporate that as part of our process, I think would be useful. And, you know, I was quite happy with the information we got last year. Seeing it evolve over the years and comparing it to what we're reviewing with the SLRD. It is, you know, you know, I feel fairly comfortable with the information. I did want to ask staff, though, to understand for me what parts of the information we ask for are particularly difficult to develop? And are there things where, you know, you're putting a lot of effort into it and we don't actually need it that much? And what are those things we can identify if there is any such thing?
Through the chair. Yeah, I think I think we should take that away and come back with it because I think part of the the challenges is we're not necessarily sure what council would need. So we have ideas, absolutely. Haven't prepared any specifically for today. But hoping to hear council if they have any thoughts on their side in terms of if you're if you're thinking that we give you a schedule, you're thinking, no, we don't need this. Or perhaps as another example, it's maybe too much detail and we want something a bit more aggregated or that kind of thing. So yeah, let us take that away and perhaps we can bring that back in in the kickoff as suggestions.
Thank you. Mayor Herford, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate Counselor Penningill's suggestion around that, what I'll call, you know, early and frequent engagement on budget pieces. However, however, we, you know, the mechanisms to do that probably vary depending on who we're trying to catch and and in that, but I do like that initiative. When I think about streamline and both streamline and be effective, sometimes those ideas are, you know, are at odds. And so I have a couple pieces. I'd like to is the the space between the budget, the various components being discussed? Like, is that space that I don't always know what, how much? Again, some of the questions around the table we've heard already, exactly how much work there is there, what that looks like. And I know that in my mind, trying to fit these things together is is interesting because we end up talking, we end up having to approve the entirety of the budget and we're looking at the effectiveness of that. So like, how much of a lift is it? And is it worth? Is it possible to bring them closer together? And if it is possible, should we be doing that? Or are there some other considerations so that that whole picture can be formed as sort of early as as possible? And I think that might help with my decision-making process, but I don't know how council feels about that, but just a little bit more compressed when we get to the actual budget piece being presented to council. Is that is that possible? And I'll leave it there. I could probably ask that question in like an hour-long format of a question, but.
Thank you again through the chair and thanks for the question and suggestion. Yes, certainly. We've talked to a few other communities and everybody does them differently. Some do a really condensed format. So back to back on a few days, I've even heard of instances where people go for organizations go for a full week and they just, they, you know, get it done, so to speak, and then come back with the changes. Again, it's something that we can work with and it would be, I think there's some definite positives and some pros there. There is a cons, you know, in terms of if they're bite-sized nuggets over time, some councils will prefer that and have the space in between to consider and to speak to their to their constituents. Again, it's something that's definitely doable and we've we've talked about that. Another thing that we've been talking about in terms of internally is whether or not we do workshops on a Monday, for example, and take it away from the Tuesday scheduling. So it's something else for council to consider and we could potentially condense it that way.
Thank you for that. I think one of the pieces that I'd like to we talked about that early and frequent engagement, which I think is really important for both to collect feedback and for transparency as to what, what, you know, how these mechanisms work. But when I think about the the public, you know, the public information piece, like that that set piece of a meeting. I'd love to be able to create some more space around that so that we can put that. I think we did a better job this year, the best that I've in a process I've been involved with with that, but some space around that so that we can really take on that information. And there's still room and time in our, I know we ran, we always run right up against the deadline, which is maybe human, which is human nature, even systems of humans, but we tend to do that. But to ensure that we can, that folks can see their input and the application of that or not, really reflected in in the budget. So that's where I'm trying to find the the space, the consolidated like doing a concerted effort on it, I think, is whether that's back-to-back weeks or the workshop piece or the the week-long piece sounds like a lot and a challenge for for everybody, but and maybe that's too far, but I like that that piece. The other question I had was around, you know, our process has been focusing on the, since I've been involved and focusing really just on the the changes. And I just wonder, as an organization, like, we're leaving that reflect that piece of reflection, like, are the pieces that we're doing and that we've already done too exclusively to staff? And I just wonder about, I don't want to open up every line of the budget, but just we've sort of a stat, we're, we've been operating on a just changes and just, just the increase going forward versus that, like reflecting on the on what we're doing and how that how that looks. And again, there's where there was also, there's like a grayscale there as far as what, you know, what that, what that means. But I suppose I'd like to understand how that reflection happens. And if or when it's appropriate for council to come to come into that, to whether that's to I don't even know to what end, because we haven't done that. We haven't really, really done that. And that's been the domain of of staff and reflected. I know that it's happening, but it's been reflective in the recommendations that come forward, but just how, and this is where I, this definitely gets into the streamlined versus effective. Maybe it'd be really effective to do that as far as an outcome goes, but it's certainly not not necessarily streamlining. Can you speak to sort of that, that piece and how if this is something that that staff's given consideration to or how how that's happening at this point?
Yes, through the chair. So the the move towards the changes has been in an effort to to be more effective with the time that we have in front of council and to be able to spend the time on the new things and not to sort of repeat historic discussions. There's other ways to approach it, absolutely, and we're all ears on that. You know, there's the opportunity to perhaps take the, you know, the key, high-profile projects and bring them back. But, you know, to put it into context, there's a lot of budget lines and a lot of discussions. So again, it's that balance. How much time are we spending in council, repeating some of the discussions? And potentially, you know, there's the opportunity to look at what are core core items that, you know, you really don't need to spend a lot of time deliberating on. And perhaps that's a direction we take as well. So, yeah, again, many ways to to do, to be more effective, many ways to get all of the information out. It's trying to find that balance.
Yeah, thank you. And I think perhaps, you know, when I think about the non-discretionary changes and these types of things, perhaps my, you know, just so a little bit of time on that, just understanding what that baseline, what that baseline operations looks like. And just, and maybe there are areas that that staff needs to check in with council on going forward. And maybe there, and maybe there aren't, but I just think that for like transparency to the community, like the community sees our operations as our operations, not just as the new operations, which is sometimes where the where the conversation lives. So I don't know that we need to wade, wade into that or provide a bunch of guidance in that area, but I think that's like a component that isn't fully flushed out. And I hear some sort of misunderstandings about that type of thing as we, as we engage with the public on the budget or as we engage with the budget and every discussion ends up being a budget discussion if you subscribe to that. So maybe that's my my comment there.
Go ahead, Ms. Glende.
Thank you through the chair. I think what I'm hearing as well is like, how how do we, as an operation, ensure that our baseline budget remains relevant? And it's, we're not just taking it for granted. And I can assure you that at an operational level, we do review that. So what I'm hearing is council wants to know what that looks like. And then, you know, perhaps better explaining the non-discretionary is not staff saying to council, you can't, it's, these are previous decisions that mean it's too late to change. They were discretionary at a certain period in time. So that kind of clarity, it sounds like you're looking for when we present the budget. Is that right? Okay.
I see a thumbs up. Okay, so I have Counselor Anderson, then Counselor Penningill, then I'm going to put myself on list and I'll come back to Counselor Hamilton.
So the staff briefing note addresses, quote, limited staff capacity, but particularly key finance staff vacancies. What I'd like to start with is the occasion where we have all of our department heads and project leads assembled for a committee of the whole meeting. They're on our screen or here in our audience. I have all of my questions done in advance in writing. I don't need that occasion. I there may, it may be more efficient for me and for staff to have my questions addressed through a written transaction. So I guess I'm posing the question, is this a part of the process that where we assemble all of our staff here to answer questions? It does that, is is there some burden there that that it might be of interest to to alleviate or address? From my perspective, I do have all my questions written out with in some detail and can can address them in another manner than in that type of format.
Counselor Anderson, can I just clarify? Are you talking about during budget time? Are you talking about quarterly variance reports and strategic plan update?
I am talking about the budget process, the final budget process. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Go ahead, Ms. Glende.
Thank you through the chair. It is a very good question. And certainly when we have a number of staff online or in the room, like that particular period of time is a lot of staff waiting to be asked a question. However, to be perfectly honest, in the past, when we've had a system where questions come in in writing, staff do the research, answer them in writing, they get compiled, that actually takes a lot more effort. And then it's difficult to get those answers out to the community because people don't necessarily read them if we publish them. What we would rather is, and certainly like open to thinking, and this is just how we ended up where we are, is that if the question is asked in the meeting, then the community hears it. Generally, staff know the answer, so it's easier, frankly, to show up and answer versus writing out an answer and then somebody compiles it and then it gets sent to council. That's our rationale for why we're doing it, but we remain open to council suggestions.
Thank you for that perspective. The chair has raised the issues of the quarterly variance reports. I find that there is some repetition there, more than more effort perhaps than than I would require. It's of interest, but I've seen it before and I have the same questions, if you like. So that's a relatively new process as in my observation over the years. And that may be more than than I require. I would, however, like to stress that the project descriptions and rationale statements for budget line items, and in particular for special operating projects, I find very valuable. And I would, I would, and I do know that as I do pass them on to members of the public, organizations and such who are interested, I do find those descriptions valuable and I hope that they would not be part of a, that a streamlining effort would not spare, would would spare those. Finally, I just want to make the observation that the presentation boards and information available through other media put together, I take it a collaboration with the Communications Department for our Public Information Night. This past year was the best I've ever seen, best in 20 years. And I found it except, I found it memorable for me because I was able so easily to take members of the public to one of those boards or a couple of the boards and say, this is what's going on. This is what I think you're interested in. I thought it was the best effort I've ever seen in that presentation for the public for that occasion. And I know it's available through the website and other means too, but a very good, good, good presentation. Thank you.
So you're not just saying that it takes 20 years to get really good understanding of municipal budget? Counselor Penningill, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Just want to add to Counselor Anderson's comments about the the quarterly report. I would hope, and I think it would be sufficient for me that it's in a state where you press a button and it spits it out. I understand there's a fair bit of additional narrative information at this point to sort of contextualize some of what's there. And for me, it would be sufficient if, you know, sort of it's in my mind, as a software developer, there's a button press, it's at the report. And then there's narrative added where there's something that I need to pay attention to as a counselor. But if there's not something sort of unique or unusual that I should be aware of, I don't necessarily need the narrative for every single piece. Now, whether our existing software is at a point where that's possible, I don't know, and maybe not. The other piece, I reflect back a couple of years ago. We, I recall we pulled out or highlighted in the budget, all the sort of climate line items. And so we had this sort of general climate bucket. We didn't necessarily go into all the detail, but had an understanding of what we were spending on climate. And I think when I was listening to the mayor speak, that sort of idea for existing spending and new sort of together of like active transit versus climate versus non-active transit versus like some of the big community concern items at a high, very high level, understanding the spending could be quite useful. But I also remember from the climate piece, I worry because diking and certain things like that, which, yes, they're climate, but there's a whole bunch of other reasons to do that. They're very big ticket items. And on the one hand, it made it very clear that we are focused on climate, taking strong action, but also made it look like maybe you're spending way too much here relative to everything else. And so there's a bit of that tension when things are so general. And so I don't quite know what to do with all of that. Just to say, I do see some value if there's some sort of maybe some additional high-level sort of groupings for for the numbers. And thinking about what might be involved in that, I don't want to say I need this because I don't see that as a simple task, but it's maybe something for us to keep in the back of our minds.
Thank you for the comments. We have definitely come a very long way in our budgeting process. I do want to make sure that we're all on the same page as to whether it's a push of a button. And I think making sure that both council and staff and our community are on the same page about the level of effort it does take to get us to where we are. I think we've come a long way, but I do want to clarify or have staff clarify. For example, the Q4 variance report, is it just a click of a button at this point?
Through the chair, I'll start with that. And then certainly Ms. Boxrude can provide more detail. But the budget process is an extraordinary amount of effort on the staff level. And to a certain degree, it should be because there's a lot of information in that budget that perhaps like as a council member, you're not interested in, but as the C O I'm interested in. So every time a staff member puts forward a project, it has to have a rationale. So every time a staff member puts forward a project, it has to have a rationale and a business case. So if we get it too streamlined, then there's not enough diligence put in the backend of the budget. So that's why a lot of that work is there. And similarly with the variance report, it may be more detailed than a council member, the community feels is important. As a CAO, I can tell you, I want that detail. I want to know exactly why we're underspent, overspent or hitting budget. Well, hitting budget, there's less of a need for explanation. It's like way to go. So there, there is a lot of that kind of narrative work that isn't just something you can do through code in a, in a budget process that I am sure the council and the community appreciates that we, we put into the process.
Maybe in addition to that, can staff speak a little bit to how the implementation of Tempest and some of the, I think it's unit four Agresso, if I'm getting my titles right, has improved our budget process and where that has facilitated some efficiencies on the staff end, just to try and close the loop on where our investments in the technology transformation program are bearing some fruit.
Certainly through the chair. So Tempest and UBW have not had a major impact on the financial planning per se. It's very much on the day-to-day operations and the financial statements and the financial management. So the, where the financial planning has been impacted is on the Questica solution and that has been significant. Now, it's sort of a multi-phase process. So the first phase was get it in, get people out there and our budget managers working on it. Now it's about spending some time leveraging that, that software and improving upon a ton of different things. There's a lot of opportunity there, which is to, you know, where we can go with the searchable and sortable outputs. But it does take time. It takes a lot of effort and yeah, and, and resources in order to, to, to move beyond just getting the financial plan out and, and being able to leverage that, that system. But certainly come a long way, even in the three years that I've been here, it has been a significant improvement due to the investment in technology, absolutely.
Thanks for that. I did have a few questions of my own and then I'll go to councillor Hamilton, whose hand I saw. So I think there's two components here when we talk about setting the stage for the forthcoming budget. One is around community engagement, communication, and one is about their tide, but getting this body comfortable with where the financial plan is going, such that we can do effective community engagement and outreach. And so my first question is, one of the components that I believe was in the 2024 budget was around the community satisfaction survey. And I'm just curious around timeline for that and if we can dovetail that into part of our budget process.
I need to find that out and come back to you because I'm thinking that that project got put on deck and I need to figure out what was the rationale for that and why it's not there. I do know that the communications team is working on a spring engagement versus waiting until November. So this is the first year where the engagement will go out. The mechanism might not be a survey necessarily, but engagement will happen in the spring to inform the budget planning and financial planning process in advance of the November information, public information night, which is really, here's our draft budget, what do you think? So that mechanism is there. It just may not be in the form of a community satisfaction survey. I will bring that back to council though.
Okay. Yeah, that's totally fair. That was just one of the pieces that I thought we could maybe capitalize on. But if that has been shelved or put on hold for a reason, then that's all right. I'm really excited to hear about that upfront, public engagement component. Cause I feel like we made the decision last time, just as a result of timing, to not do the survey earlier. And that was one thing that I felt like I was really missing going into the budget discussions, was not having that check-in with the community in advance of budget in terms of priorities. We've done that on and off in previous years, so it's exciting to see that move up. One thing that I'll just bring up that has come up with the youth council is maybe doing an engagement session with them before they disperse in June, just to try and access a different component of our community as well. That might just be one additional early engagement piece is if we can get some of the folks from the youth council engaged on the early budget engagement, that would be pretty cool, I think. So in addition to that, I think, as I think about the budget process specifically and how we've broken it down into the different sections, one of the things that I think is really challenging for me as a councillor is, it's actually really hard to do engagement with only pieces of the budget. So it really isn't until the tying it all together that I feel like I can have a fulsome conversation about where we're at. So that's partly why I think the early engagement is important to inform this, those discussions. But in terms of like where we can compress, I think if it's functional on the staff side to compress like the special operating, the capital into a, into joint workshops and we can do the heavy lifting around the table and getting comfortable and getting closer to that tying it all together earlier on. I think that would be really helpful for me to be able to then carry out whatever our draft budget is to the community and do that community engagement on that more fulsome budget. Cause it's really hard to do it in a piecemeal fashion has been my experience. And so that would just be my overall feedback on kind of the timeline and where we might be able to find some efficiencies. I don't know how effective that is. It will mean some longer days for us around the table and hopefully just more chocolate to help us get there. And then just picking up on one of councillor Pedding Gill's comments around identifying the climate adaptation and mitigation projects. That was actually something that I went back and looked, I think it was the 2020 or the 2021 budget where we did a really phenomenal job. There was actually a one pager that outlined the total amount of across the entire budget, the capital, or sorry, the climate mitigation, the climate adaptation projects. And in the absence of being able to do the carbon budgeting component this year, I think that going back to that, if it's not a huge lift, would be really helpful for me just to understand how much we're putting into those different buckets on, on climate. So those are a few thoughts from my end. I'll go back to mayor, sorry councillor Hamilton.
Thanks. First question, and then I'll just go through some comments. So this, this year, engineering had a slightly different process, a slightly newer process, if I understand, for their budgeting, which was sort of taking all their projects, prioritizing and then looking what the top priority was and putting them forward. Do I understand correctly that that's a process that's going to be extended to the other departments?
Through the chair, that's correct. Yes.
Great. Look forward to hearing that. That's good. One struggle, one, one hiccup that we've seen, this has come through just recently. When items come to get approved in budget, they don't necessarily have the staff capacity to enable the execution of that item. We've had a community group that saw a, a budget line item be approved for 2024. And then staff responded to the community group that the staff capacity wasn't there to make that project happen in 2024. Do we have a process for understanding the relationship between our capacity to deliver the projects, the line item effectively from a staff perspective and our financial ability to budget the item?
Through the chair, yes, and often, or not often, when it occurs that staff capacity isn't able to execute, there are a number of different reasons. It could be unexpected. Emergencies like the Queen's Way Lift Station is a really good example of, of things that come in unexpectedly. Admittedly, the district, we are improving our processes on matching capacity with financial capacity, like staff capacity. And right now we're working at a strategic level with all of the directors that report to the GMs about cross-departmental clarity on projects and understanding impact and getting much better at understanding that. So that, that variance report that comes through and you see, oh, no staff capacity, we've got to carry forward, that we make that disappear or shrink it. So we are definitely improving that process and looking to get better at it.
Thanks. This ties in, I think a little bit to councillor Stoner's suggestion of putting the tie it all together a little bit sooner in the process. I, I recall being a bit surprised by the tax increase when we saw it this year and it was the magnitude of the tax increase. But of course, that's just the decisions we make around the council table, one piece at a time. And then we see the end result, right? If there's any way, and I, and I recognize that this is very challenging, for us to have an earlier estimate on those sorts of, on the sort of budget increases, the, the taxation increases we might expect, so that we, as we're making decisions throughout the year, can have that in the back of our mind, whether we're shooting for large, whether we're going to be having larger than normal tax increases or normal or maybe even smaller than normal increases.
Through the chair, thank you for the question. So one of the improvements we did two years ago, I think now it is, is to actually map out the five-year tax implication at the end of the tying it all together. So you can see going into the next year. We've also brought in the, the non-discretionary earlier in the process. So you actually see that even though the, the special operating project is still to be determined, you do get that real lion's share of the impact earlier on. So we'll continue to do that and continue to highlight it. And perhaps what we can do is introduce that prior year, five year, right at the, at the beginning as well. So you can just refresh everyone's memory and get them on track on where we're at.
And then just a few quick responses to the comments that have been made. I, I personally do appreciate the quarterly and the detail in the quarterly. While I may not pick apart every single line item in the quarterly, I do appreciate it being there. I thought the budget night, the budget presentation, public presentation night this year was a great balance of communicating clearly and effectively with the community and having council stand up and actually present it. The mayor actually stand up and presented, I think was really valuable. I do think that a clearer communication and Mayor Hereford, I think you brought this up, clearer communication of the budget, of the baseline budget. I recognize the budgeting process is driven by deltas. But the, when we communicate it, I, I feel like we may be, be able to do a better job in communication if we put the baseline at a slightly more to the forefront. And I think one of the questions councillor Pedding Gill asked around, you know, categorization of climate objects. Yeah. I think a lot of that, each person is going to have a different way they're going to want to categorize the items. And I'll just put in a plug that if we have categories assigned and that, that budget is searchable and sortable, we can categorize them ourselves.
Somebody still has to assign the categories and that's not going to be us. Which will, yeah. But point taken. Councillor, any further questions or comments or thoughts on this? My councillor French, go ahead.
Thanks, Chair. I have a few thoughts. I'll share those. Using Let's Talk Squamish as the hub for information and public feedback, I thought worked really well. Not just this most recent year, but in previous years as well. And which takes me to my own thoughts on Let's Talk Squamish. The uptake on that tool has been quicker and more successful than I anticipated, which is excellent. Think it will come as no surprise to anybody that I found open book to be only somewhat helpful. And I, I hear and understand that improvements are on the way for that particular device. Advertising strategy I felt was effective for this most recent process. I felt like it reached a broad range of residents and generated an appropriate amount of interest and feedback. The in-person events that I attended, the two of them were, were both good and I thought effective. I was at one coffee with council session and also of course, the gathering at Houseon Secondary School. And holding three coffee with council events with a budget focus in conjunction with the mayor's drop-in, I thought all of that worked well. And scheduling them in different areas of the community, at different times of the community, I think is also really effective to make sure that we get maximum participation from as many people who want to participate in the process as possible. And the Houseon Secondary event, I thought that the venue was a little bit large for the number of people that were involved. But this, that particular event is often a feast or famine. So, and also venue availability is a factor. So if, if we could book a smaller-ish space next year, I think that might be more to my own liking. Thank you.
Thanks for the comments. Anything further, council? Mayor Hereford, go ahead.
Thank you. I guess what I'm thinking about earlier in my comments and some of the others, we were talking about bringing pieces closer together. I wondered about, does staff have enough guidance there? Like what, where does decision-making lie here? Do you need, should we have a conversation around whatever the extreme end of that is, a week-long workshop? Or like, how, how are we going to resolve what that means exactly? Maybe that's the next step piece, or is there something that you'd like us to contemplate here before we conclude the conversation?
Thanks for the question. Yeah, something more specific would be helpful. I, I see that we're nearing the end and I'm sure council wants the break. But, and maybe that's something for agenda planning to talk about. But I don't know if you want to do a straw poll on, hey, you want to take a week and do budget? Or do you want to condense everything and have other days than Tuesdays? That would be really helpful, even that part is understanding council's appetite for off, off Tuesday budget days.
So, and is the, is the, I'm just, I like to think in extremes, it's helpful. Is that, is that week-long, let's just meet every day and get this, get this thing over the line? Is that something that our staffing and systems would, would allow? Or is the maximum that we can do, should we be thinking about something else for that extreme end of the, of the spectrum, if you will?
Thank you for the question. Appreciate the extreme. I think the extreme might be that extreme for, for staff to, to achieve. But I think somewhere in between what we have now is what I'm hearing from council as well. And the extreme would be fantastic. So condensing the, the various workshops potentially on and off, off Tuesday time period would probably keep things top of mind for everyone and it is doable for staff as well. You know, we'd have to think about something, a mechanism in which when there's some significant changes, we build some time between the working workshops and that final product. But absolutely, I think that more condensed is doable, but probably not that extreme week. I think that would be a bit too much to, to start with.
I love finding out where the edge of things are. So thank you for, for that. So I think personally, I feel that going closer together would be helpful for me, as I said in my, in my comments. And to facilitate that and to avoid and to also facilitate good decision-making, I do think that around budget, that an off day for that is, is appropriate. I don't think we need to decide which day that, that is. But if that, if we knew in whatever it is, half of September, half of October, something like this, we had, you know, an extra day, we could do a straw, if that was the direction, then we could do, you know, a poll and figure out which, which day is the least problematic or, or is ideal for this, for this. But that, that would be, that's kind of where I'm at as far as the, the work that happens at the council table. A lot of the other feedback was around, you know, the engagement pieces and so on. But when it gets right down to, to our process at the table, I'd like to see a condensed process. And I don't know about the week, I think the condensed week, I can see the challenges with that. I think no one would sleep and it would be challenging to actually get there. I appreciate that's a bridge too far, but perhaps we can get this done in a, in a shorter time period. And I think to do that, we need to do that off day of, of some sort. So that's where I am. I don't think we need to decide which day it is, but I'd love to have a discussion on that particular piece of this so that staff can go and, and start figuring out what that looks like. So that's a question through to council. Opposition to that, I don't want to make a resolution here. I just need to set sort of, we like to make sure that staff has the direction, leaves here with the direction that they were, that they were seeking when they came in.
Before I go around the table, can I just clarify? So our process for the last few years has been kind of like a budget kickoff in the summer, like late June, early July. Then staff go away while we take a break in August and you guys work really hard to do the things on the backend. And then we typically do like the workshop series through September, October, tying it all together in November, public engagement, November, adoption, December. That's been the timeline. So the, I think what I am hearing is like that in-between from the extreme. So the, I think what I am hearing is like that in-between from the extreme is, would that still include kind of like a kickoff in the summer? And then condensing that September, October workshop series into a few days? Is that the proposal?
Through the chair, thank you for that clarification. I think from what I'm hearing, so what what we have done in the last couple of years was we did the the capital budget in July and then we actually did a kickoff in September. So it's it's taken a few different forms. What I would suggest is not doing the capital, taking the feedback that we put the capital and the special operating projects together. Not do the capital in July and do the full kickoff late September. So it gives staff that time. We have the public engagement, that initial engagement in the spring. And then come back in more of a condensed, maybe late September, October time period. And then have a few weeks to the time it all together and public engagement. So so that gives that time to make adjustments and then council can meet with constituents, et cetera, as well. And then the public engagement be along the way in terms of coffee with council and and those kinds of things.
Thanks for clarifying. Okay, just some quick comments on timing, starting with you, Counselor Anderson. Does that proposal of trying to like condense some of that workshop series and potentially using some off Tuesdays work from your perspective? Or is there strong opposition?
Condensed as in a number of meetings over a shorter period of time. I'm quite happy with that. It's the information I don't want to see condensed. Thank you.
Counselor Hamilton.
I agree with condensing the budget as much as possible in terms of our delivery. Unfortunately, I'm highly constrained in off Tuesdays. I think it's important to recognize that council is a part-time job and that we need to balance, many of us need to balance other priorities and other jobs. And with the many obligations that come with council, I think it is important to respect that we do have other obligations and it is difficult to schedule around them. Thanks. So I highly prefer we stay on Tuesdays.
Counselor Peddingle.
Yeah, thanks. Similar to Counselor Hamilton, I am, I support sort of constraint, condensing the process, but prefer that we maybe, you know, put in some long Tuesdays. My, and who knows, maybe it'll change, but my current job has become more constrained on off Tuesdays. Evenings and weekends for me are a little more possible. But and I'd probably be able to make things work, but the more notice I have and because it's, it would require some some juggling on my part.
Counselor French.
Copy, cut, paste what Counselors Hamilton and Peddingle have just said. Adding in my own thought that off Tuesdays can sometimes work for me, the more advanced notice, the better.
I'm assuming I'm next. Yeah, well, you know, welcome to the herding cats process here. Evenings and weekends are harder for me. I generally have a more flexible schedule, but like if it comes to August, for instance, I probably won't have any childcare. So like in those windows, my other job pulls me in. But yeah, I am a bit more flexible for months outside of that about switching days of the week that we can do or long Tuesdays.
Yeah, from my perspective, I'm generally supportive of the intention of trying to condense this. I think putting capital with special operating as opposed to moving it further ahead makes good sense to me. And leaving kind of the spring and summer for public engagement. I do think it is challenging to ask folks to to use days that aren't Tuesdays. Unfortunately, it's just the reality of this job and the cost of living and the reality that we all have multiple things that we're juggling. And so I think it's worth trying to do a little bit of scheduling to see if there is a day that we could pull in late September or October. It's also a super busy time for things that are outside and related to council. It's just after UBCM and all the other things that happen. And so it's a big ask. And so I think that'll be our limiting factor as to whether we can condense it or not from our scheduling. But I think that's something we can do offline. And hopefully that's enough direction for you at this point. I'm seeing nods on that end of the table. This was just an open conversation for feedback and discussion, so there is no motion. So as long as staff feel like they have what they need to go away, great. We will take a recess until 2:45. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everybody. We are in the District of Squamish's Committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, March 26th is 1:45, 2:45. That clock is still wrong. And we are on item six two in our agenda this evening, afternoon, which is a temporary use permit numbered TUW 00076 for the Wood Fiber LNG Flotelle. This is a presentation from staff, an initial review of the application for the committee's consideration. And I'll pass it over to Mr. Prahalid. Thank you very much for to walk us through the presentation.
Good afternoon, committee. My name is Rish Prahalid, planner for MPI. I'm joined by Kate Mulligan, Director, MPI, and Jonas Valaniscus, Senior Director of Community Planning.
Sorry, Mr. Prahalid, can you just, for the committee, identify what MPI stands for?
Sorry, yeah, Major Projects Industrial Team. Today's presentation aims to present staff's review of the W L N G Flotelle T U P application to the committee and receive feedback prior to an issuance decision. The W L N G project is located on the former Wood Fiber pulp mill site. Once constructed, the W L N G facility will have the capacity to liquefy 2.1 million tons per year of natural gas, have a storage capacity of 250,000 cubic meters and will export liquefied natural gas supplied to the facility via Fortis B C pipeline by tankers. There is no road access and all personnel, equipment and supplies for the project will be ferried by vessel. The project will use electrical power source from B C Hydro. W L N G underwent an environmental assessment process from 2013 to 2015 and received an environmental assessment certificate for the certified project area under the British Columbia Environmental Assessment Act in 2015, an environmental assessment approval from Squamish Nation through the Squamish Nation National, through the Squamish Nation Environmental Assessment Agreement in 2015, and a positive federal decision statement under the Canadian Environmental Assessment Act 2012 and 2016. The E A C and S N E A A both approved in 2015, defined the certified project description, but did not include worker accommodation infrastructure. At the time of the original application, sufficient worker accommodation options were thought to be made available in the local community. As a result of local community feedback on land-based work camps, W L N G is now proposing a temporary accommodation for construction workers at the at the Wood Fiber site. An amended E A C with new conditions was approved on November 1st, 2023, adding the following to Section 3.0, Construction Infrastructure, Facilities and Activities in Schedule A of the Certificate. Those include one temporary floating worker accommodations and associated mooring and access infrastructure, temporary housing accommodations for workers and onshore drinking water treatment to supply the flotel. Conditions for the E A O Amendment Number Three include a gender and cultural safety plan, worker health and wellness plan, flotel and workplace culture committee, access and travel, and flotel air quality and noise monitoring. Squamish Nation approved an amendment to the S N E A A, adding the flotel in November 2023. Squamish Nation's environmental subcommittee participated in the review of this application. Environmental concerns and community safety were key considerations based on technical scoping and community engagement from 2019 to 2023. Squamish Nation issued its own amendment conditions in the S N E A A and worked with the E A O on conditions for the project's amended E A C. Considerations included safety of women, indigenous persons and other minorities at the flotel and in the broader community, environment, environmental impacts and how sound Squamish Nation members indigenous rights allowing access to wood fiber for traditional uses and ensuring that the proponent is held accountable and commitments are fulfilled. Conditions of approval require that out-of-town workers living at the flotel are now allowed to travel to and from town during off-shift hours. Several policies, training commitments and and reporting obligations must be completed to focus on safety and security. All flotel waste must be barged to existing treatment facilities. No discharge will be authorized from the flotel. Squamish Nation cultural training for flotel residents and ongoing Squamish Nation involvement in workplace in workplace culture. The flotel is proposed by W L N G to mitigate community concerns related to increased pressure on the on the Squamish housing market and other services, concerns raised by Squamish Nation and the greater community related to safety, more specifically related to gender safety by reducing community interactions, avoiding increased traffic volumes by reducing the number of personal vehicles in the community and providing a safe and welcoming worker accommodation to attract a diverse workforce. A marine vessel flotel has been identified by W L N G as a temporary workforce accommodation for the duration of the project's for the duration of the project's construction period. The flotelle is to act as a key mitigation to address community impact concerns by the community and various project regulators. The flotelle is proposed to operate from Q2 2024 through the end of construction in 2027 and accommodate between 400 to 600 persons at peak construction. The flotelle has a capacity of 652 passenger cabins, each with single occupancy, one bed, and bathroom facilities. The initial projects statistics page states that 766 cabins would be provided on the flotelle. However, after renovations, the number was reduced to 652. Bridgeman's is the contractor that will supply the flotelle to WONG and will also function as a flotelle operator. Workers are currently residing in Port Millan and being transported to the project site on a daily basis. The permits required by WONG include the BC Environmental Assessment Office, Environmental Assessment Certificate Office Certificate Amendment received November 1st, 2023. Squamish Nation Squamish Nation Environmental Assessment Agreement Amendment received December 4th, 2023. Impact Assessment Agency of Canada, a federal decision statement, received confirmation on November 29th, 2023 that an amendment for the flotelle was not required. BC Energy Regulator, Water Sustainability Act, Section 7 Authorization, received March 7th, 2024. Vancouver Coastal Health, Water Supply Construction Permit, on target to be received in April, 2024. Vancouver Coastal Health, Permit to Operate, Food Services Permit, and Sewage Holding Tank Permit. All of these applications have been submitted to VCH. And Transport Canada, Vessel Inspections and Flagging Requirements, as well as the Navigable Waters Act Authorization. TUP 76 is proposing temporary workforce accommodation in the I-3 General Industrial Zone. This zone is intended to provide land use compatible with large lot sizes at locations near waterfront, rail, and other major transportation routes. Uses intended under the I-3 General Industrial Zones are primarily oriented to intensive manufacturing, transportation, and the shipment of manufactured bulk goods or materials. The official community land use designation for this parcel is Marine Gateway, which allows for marine transportation and shipping, port terminal, and storage of marine vessels in serviced marinas or other designated moored locations. The district's DPA-1 environmental protections do not apply to the flotelle as the marine infrastructure received a Department of Fisheries and Oceans Authorization, which addresses the environmental concerns. Staff have also assessed that the environmental hazards for the flotelle are not required as per district bylaws. Staff have reviewed the traffic management plan and traffic impact assessment provided by the applicants. Staff have completed their initial review of the traffic reports and have provided the applicants with comments on each report and will update council once the comments have been addressed. Comments have focused on the ingress and egress of the Site B access, as well as WONG integrating the Fortis BC traffic numbers into their reports. Workers residing on the flotelle will be ferried to the project site from the lower mainland. For workers residing within the district, WONG is currently using Daryl Bay Ferry Terminal to ferry project personnel to and from the project area until October 31st, 2024, after which time Site B is in discussion to be used. Shuttles and private vehicles are expected to be used to access Site B. Information relating to the movement of workers and how road traffic will be managed during the construction phase of the project is available in the Traffic Management Plan. As part of the EAO Certificate Amendment Number Three, Condition 29.1, workers residing on the flotelle will not be permitted marine-based transportation off the flotelle to access the district for recreation, entertainment, and other non-work-related activities. Workers who were not residents of the district prior to September 20th, 2023 are required to reside at the flotelle. Exceptions may be granted due to the extenuating circumstances, and a record of exemptions with rationale for each entry must be kept and provided to the EAO. 65 WONG management employees will be residing in company-designated housing within the Squamish community in the Saraka One Building occupying 46 units. All non-local personnel providing ancillary services, including medical, food, and beverage, laundry, recreational, and leisure services, will be housed in the flotelle. Local ancillary service providers who reside in Squamish will be transported to and from the site daily. These contract negotiations are still underway. Potable water will be sourced from Wood Fiber Creek. Water will be treated via an onshore water treatment plant to meet the water quality requirements of the Vancouver Coastal Health Water Supply System Construction Permit, currently being reviewed by VCH staff. This permit is expected to be approved sometime in April. However, there are still several issues that VCH staff are working with the applicant. WONG is also required to obtain a permit to operate from VCH. A Waste Management Plan for the flotelle is currently being reviewed by WONG and will be provided to the district once the review is complete and before flotelle operations commence. Procurement of waste management contractors is underway. Once disposal facilities are known, information will be shared with the district. The district landfill will not be utilized for waste disposal. The wastewater treatment plant, due to its capacity, cannot accept gray water for the flotelle. Discussions on whether the wastewater treatment plant can accept gray water once scheduled renovations are completed to increase capacity at the public's worksyards are currently underway with the applicant. Included in council's package was a noise report for the entire project, which references the flotelle. Air quality and noise assessments were conducted as part of the Environmental Assessment Certificate Amendment Application to include a temporary workforce accommodation as part of the project description. WONG is required to obtain a qualified professional to develop an air quality monitoring and mitigation plan, as well as a noise monitoring and mitigation plan. The following material has been reviewed by staff, and when appropriate, the district has provided feedback to the applicant and appropriate regulator as part of the ongoing project review process outside of the TUP 76 application process. Below includes summarized details regarding the status of these review processes. Information is provided to council for informational purposes only and is not to be considered as part of issuance of the TUP 76 application. Emergency plans. Emergencies related to the flotelle will be handled in accordance with the project's emergency response plan. WONG's ERP was developed as a requirement under the Energy Resource Activities Act, which requires the permit holder to prepare and maintain an emergency response program and an emergency response plan. WONG's ERP is meant to prepare for emergencies and outlines procedures to be followed effectively to effectively respond to construction-related emergencies, including those associated with the temporary workforce accommodation. WONG's ERP has not been made available to the public. However, the ERP has been reviewed by all applicable agencies, regulators, indigenous groups, and stakeholders. Staff reviewed the ERP and provided comments to the BC Energy Regulator and the applicant to address outstanding issues. Security and policing. Both WONG and McDermott have security management plans in place for the project, inclusive of the flotelle. McDermott is a prime contractor hired by WONG to oversee the project construction. McDermott will have a site security service provider in place, providing 24 hours security onsite. Closed-circuit television systems will be placed throughout the flotelle and be monitored 24 hours a day by security personnel managed by Bridgeman's. In addition, systems will be in place for security-controlled site access and flotelle access. Security services are also identified for enforcement of alcohol, drug, and contraband policies onsite and aboard the flotelle. The flotelle is proposed as a dry facility with no alcohol or drugs allowed aboard. The security management plans have not been made publicly available at this time. Medical services. WONG and McDermott, through a third-party medical service provider, will deliver onsite emergency medical services 24 hours a day to project workers. Medical services on the flotelle will consist of onsite nurse practitioner, the availability of a remote medical director, and remote counselling services, with the potential for other services to be provided to reduce associated impacts on local medical services. Emergency evacuation equipment will include an onsite ambulance, an emergency transport vessel, and an offsite ambulance for hospital transfer. The site will be capable of receiving an emergency helicopter if required. Offsite medical services, including Squamish General Hospital, will be used in cases when cases exceed onsite capabilities. A gender and cultural safety plan is required under both Condition 26 of WONG's EAC and the Squamish Nation Environmental Assessment. EAC Condition 26 requires that the GCSP be developed by a qualified professional in consultation with community partners, including the formation of a gender safety advisory committee that includes Aboriginal groups, District of Squamish, Fortis BC, and other Squamish area justice service organizations. As a part of the EAC Condition 26, the GCSP must be submitted to the EAO 60 days prior to flotelle operations and require approval from the EAO. WONG has submitted the GCSP to the EAO for approval on February 16th, 2024. Staff are currently reviewing the gender and cultural safety plan. Council will be provided an update concerning the GCSP once staff have completed their review and have provided the applicants with comments. The GCSP is currently in draft form and has not been made publicly available at this time. The CAC policy and the district's DCC bylaw do not apply to this project. Staff will continue to review and process the TUP 76 application. Any feedback received will be provided to the applicant. Staff will schedule a public hearing and an issuance decision date for the TUP unless otherwise directed. At this time, I'd like to hand it back to council for questions or comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Prahalid, for a very thorough presentation of the application to date. I do just want to recognize, we have a full gallery in council chambers today. For those who have joined us online might not be able to see that, and it's rare that we actually have a full gallery. And I suspect that there are more folks who are tuning in online, so just want to welcome everybody and say thank you for joining us for this important discussion and review of this application. And to set some expectations that this is a committee meeting, there will be no opportunity for public comment. This is an opportunity for council to ask questions about the application. And as Mr. Prahalid just mentioned, that there will be a process for securing public input through a public hearing process at a later date. But still welcome everyone to be here as part of the discussion. With that, council, I will open it up to questions. I see councillor French's hand to kick us off. Please go ahead.
Thanks, Chair. I saw in the report and noted in the presentation today four permits required for the flotelle and pending from Vancouver Coastal Health. I heard in the presentation that at least one has a specific date attached to it for an expectation of when it would be issued. But I didn't hear a similar comment for the other three. So my question is, what has Vancouver Coastal Health shared with our staff around timing of the three permits that didn't have specific timing attached in the presentation today?
Through the chair, those three permits, the permit to operate, the sewage holding tank, and sorry, I can't remember the third one. Those come after the construction permit has been issued. So that water supply construction permit is the main permit that they're still waiting on. Those other three precede that permit, so those can't be issued until that first permit has been issued. And on our conversations with VCH, they don't see too many issues with those three permits. It's just that main permit that they're still working through with the applicant.
Okay, so would it be safe to say then Vancouver Coastal Health required permits are expected to be issued within weeks as opposed to months?
Through the chair, that is correct.
Okay, and without, I'll come at this a different angle. Are all four of those permits required before any workers can be housed on the flotelle?
Through the chair, essentially VCH gives occupancy for that flotelle, so without those VCH permits, no workers can be on the vessel.
Go ahead. Want to clarify, that's also a different agency that you're asking about timelines on. So just want to clarify, that's not within District of Squamish issuing those permits.
Chair, I'll pass on this question. I expect one of my colleagues might answer. Ask it.
Thank you. I have Mayor Hurford next.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. The water piece, I was curious. I understand, to me, it makes sense VCHs would regulate, you know, the quality of water, make sure all that stuff is online. If that is approved conceptually, are there any other permits from District Squamish for the construction of whatever that is or the location of? I don't know what the facility that piece looks like. I'm just trying to understand the moving pieces here. So is there a building permit that's needed or some other accommodation to facilitate that water treatment piece?
Through the chair, all those permits related to the water infrastructure is held by VCH.
Thank you for that. And along the same lines, in the documentation provided, there was very little about the sort of the ship-to-shore connection. I appreciate there's a ship-to-shore, like the electrification of the project and the water, but like walkways and so on. Is there a reason that we're not seeing much about that here? Is that regulated through some other processes? Is it already permitted in the zone? Is there another authority? There's a lot of pieces here. So where does that piece live? Because it seemed a little light from what I was expecting to see.
Through the chair, that infrastructure falls under Transport Canada's Navigable Waters Act. So they're the agency regulating that piece.
Okay, thank you. Looking through the EA table, which was maddening, I would just like anyone watching, if you want to interact with the EA comments table. I don't know in what format it makes sense, but it's certainly not in the format that they've presented on their website, which we've linked to in the report. So thank you for providing that link. And wow, but in that, it mentions marine construction vehicles as in part of that EA discussion. Is that what is now called the flotelle or is that something else? There is something about marine construction vehicles that seem to be distinct from the flotelle and folks living on it was a lot of EA comments around that. Or is the flotelle a marine construction vehicle? I just want to make sure that I am interpreting the comments in that table correctly.
Can you clarify those comments of the district made to the EA? Or are they EA-specific comments? Some context as to where?
They were all, yeah, they were prominently throughout the EA tables. And it's fine if we don't have an answer, we can find that.
Through the chair, that is something that staff will need to bring back to council.
Yeah, as it reads, and that was early days, it felt like there was accommodation happening in others. But I know the EA certificate is for one vessel. I just wanted to make sure that I reconciled all that. The outstanding traffic management plan, I understand these things take, you know, a while to work through. When do we expect to see this and what's the expected mechanism for it to come to council? Like part of the public, sort of that next public piece? Or is there a step between here and there where we look specifically at that piece?
Through the chair, it is expected that those reports will be completed before the public hearing. But it really depends on the timing as to whether we'd be able to present those reports separately aside from the flotelle public hearing.
Okay, thank you. I have two more if that's, okay, Chair. Things like the transfer of the sewage from the flotelle to the barge that takes it to points unknown, I appreciate that that's not to the district. Who regulates that? Things like that, which I think pose a risk to make sure that they're done correctly. Who oversees that? Is that Vancouver Coastal Health? Who oversees that? Is that Vancouver Coastal Health? Is it, it doesn't feel like us. I just want to make sure that we understand who and where.
Through the chair, those have been our conversations with Vancouver Coastal Health. They, they are also asking those same questions, but overall, they, they oversee kind of that transfer.
Thank you. Often before an application such as this is made, there's a, a pre-application meeting with proponents to understand the, the technical details required and the timelines. Is that something that happened in this case? And if so, when?
Through the chair, yes, I believe we did have pre-application meeting at least one. May, may have had more. There's been a lot of discussion going on between staff and the applicants even before the application was made. So I can't tell you the exact date of that meeting, but I'm fairly certain that we did have one.
Okay, sometimes in this room I ask questions I know the answer to, just to get it onto the record. And the E, the E A table shows that the first pre-application meeting on this was held on August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. When was the application received? I just want to make sure we understand timelines that we're dealing with here.
I believe the application was made in August of twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thank you.
I have Counselor Penningill and Counselor Hamilton.
Yeah, thanks. I'm going to change the order some of my questions. Just following up on the TAC, and I can't remember what that's an acronym for, Technical Advisory Committee document. Can we actually request from the E A O that in a readable format? When I went through, there was things that I did want to follow up on and understand, understand if they're relevant to our decision. There's a number of reports in that with non-functional links that I wanted to see. And some of those things, it sounds like have been resolved, other ones not. But in the format, I just wasn't able to make sense of it, but I would like access to that information before making a decision. So if we can at least make that request of the E A O, it'd be much appreciated. I did on the marine construction vehicle, as I read at one point, there was a plan to house possibly up to one hundred fifty people in addition to a flotel. That's, as I read, no longer the plan. It's to house people who work on the marine construction vehicle. But, so my question here is, do we understand how many people are going to be housed on this vehicle? And given that there will be housing on the vehicle, even if it's less than before, does that require some sort of temporary use permit for people living on it? Or is that somehow handled under other regulations?
And again, I just clarify, Counselor Penningill, you're referring to attachment number eight in our package, the E A O flotel tracking comment log?
That's one of the places I saw it. I think it was in one of the other documents as well. I can't remember which one. And if it's something that, as far as I read, a marine construction vehicle or maybe two of them are required. And so I'm just trying to understand, will people be living on, on these? How many? And does it require then permits because people will be living on them?
Go ahead, Ms. Mulligan.
Staff will have to come back to counsel to clarify the status. There was another vessel that was described within the E A O applications and comment log concerning marine construction activities where there were accommodations. However, we would need to check on the status of that and the intention.
Thank you.
Sorry, can I just clarify on that? That is not the subject of this application, however. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Penningill.
Yeah, thank you. And do we know how much wood fiber is spending on the, the flotel?
It was not included in the application documents per se. There is a number of different communications regarding the expenditures related to the flotel, but not part of application documents.
Okay, I wonder if that's something we could ask for the proponent on clarification. I've seen or heard various things, but I would like some clarification and when that comes back to us, assuming it's forthcoming. Just to sort of understand, to put it into context, you know, ballpark relative to pro formas that we see, what sort of magnitude number of this is, would be helpful. I will try and, one more for now. We, there's a talk about a September twenty, twenty twenty-three date for who's an existing worker versus not a worker. And there's been different definitions of who's a worker, who's not a worker. Workers are required to be on the flotel, except not the workers who are in the Sorocco and so on. So is there a way to really understand in terms of temporary employees of this project? What are the numbers? Basically, what are the numbers sort of regardless of, of classification and where are they living in the community? Is that something that we can ask for clarification on?
Through the chair, the management plans indicate that there's a total of eight hundred workers that include local and non-local workforce. What we've been told by the applicant that local workforce will continue to reside within the community if they were residents of the community prior to September twentieth, twenty twenty-three. In extenuating circumstances, W L N G may cite workers locally, but they need to log that activity, provide the details of it, and make it available for the E A O. So those would be through a reporting format essentially with the E A O and not the District of Squamish. The number of workers that at this time are, are anticipated to be on the flotel is up to the maximum capacity that the flotel has, which has been denoted in the graphic representation that was provided within the council report.
Thank you. Yeah, one quick follow-up.
Yeah, so sorry, just to follow up. So then do we know what number of non-locals or temporary workers are counted in that pre-two thousand twenty-three threshold? Like how many people are, is this two hundred workers or fifty or do we know?
I don't have an exact number in the pre-two thousand twenty-three count. However, the workers fluctuate over the duration of the construction period. So therefore, there could, it could vary, right, over those four years.
Thank you. Welcome. Just so folks know, there, I think there are still a seat or two over on the far side over here. I have Counselor Hamilton next. Go ahead.
Thanks very much through the chair. Thank you very much, staff, for bringing this temporary use permit application to council for considerate for, for conversation. Just to be sure that I understand very clearly where our policies, where the delineation of our policies are. When I look in, I look for the, looking for the, where we regulate, what are our policies on temporary use permits? I see that in our O C P, section thirty-one is governing temporary use permits. Is that the place and the only place where we provide guidance, policy guidance on issuance of temporary use permits?
Yes, that is correct. Our land development procedures bylaw also has a little piece on temporary use permits, but most of that deals with notifications for T U Ps and also the delegation requirements for T U Ps to be delegated to staff.
Thanks very much. And so in our O C P, third, section thirty-one point one, the objective of the temporary use permit is, says to permit temporary uses to provide a short-term opportunity when considered appropriate by council without negatively affecting existing businesses or surrounding properties in terms of noise, lighting, parking, traffic, and other impacts. When I think of this application, a lot of the surrounding properties are not within the District of Squamish. Britannia Beach and Bowen Island, for example, are properties, areas that are going to be impacted by this decision. Has this, have we made a referral to the S L R D and perhaps Bowen Island to hear their perspective on the impact of this T U P on their space?
Through the chair, yes, the T U P application was referred to the S L R D. Do you want me to get into the, what their comments were or?
When will we receive their comments before we need to make a decision?
Not, not to throw the S L R D under the bus, but their comments were that, that they made their comments in the, in the tracking table and that that's the extent of their comments.
And Bowen Island, has it been referred to Bowen Island? My, my, my thinking there is there's going to be a lot of traffic ferrying workers to the flotel that wouldn't exist if it wasn't a flotel.
Through the chair, a referral hasn't been made to Bowen Island.
Would staff need a motion from council to make a referral to Bowen Island? Or would they be able to do that without a motion?
Through the chair, I don't, I don't believe a motion is required.
And can I just confirm that all referral responses are typically collated and put forward in a decision package when it comes through public hearing? Is that the correct process?
Through the chair, yes, that can be included in the public hearing package.
Thank you. Counselor Hamilton, any further questions? No. On this, go ahead, Counselor French.
Chair, this thought of referring to Bowen Island has me then thinking about, what about referring to Metro Vancouver, who is a body that's just as adjacent and similarly impacted?
Thank you for the comment. I'll leave that with staff for consideration. Counselor Greenlaw, go ahead.
Yeah, a little bit piggybacking on, on this line of questioning. Do we know where exactly the facilities in Vancouver that they'll be using are? And has Vancouver been informed for a traffic impact study? Like have they performed one or is that just outside of our jurisdiction?
Go ahead, Mr. Valanescus.
Thank you through the chair. Any kind of land use issues or traffic issues happening in, outside of district jurisdiction, in another jurisdiction, are governed by the land use regulations and policies in that jurisdiction. So if they're using parking facilities, and that would be governed under the zoning provisions in Metro Vancouver or wherever that is. So we're not typically examining other jurisdictions and the way they're dealing with parts of this project that are not within our jurisdiction.
Okay, thanks. And just in the conversation of traffic impact within Squamish, do we know how free, well, how large the shuttle boats are going to be for workers? And how many workers will be coming and going, you know, at the same time for Daryl Bay?
Can I use this one? Oh, I can. Through the chair, yeah, the.
Can you just introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry, I'm Devon Kuehne, manager of development engineering. So the traffic impact assessment or the T I A does indicate at the, at the moment, I think it's fifty-eight trips per day with forty-four of those anticipated at the peak times from Squamish and some of them coming from Vancouver. Those numbers, however, are still draft. And so that's what we have at the moment, but we have sent comments back and are awaiting an updated T I A.
Thanks. Thank you very much. I have a few questions of my own, and then I'll go back around the table to those who might have some outstanding questions. In our staff report, there's the flotel accommodation requirement chart that shows the three-year construction window starting in January twenty twenty-four and suggests that there's three hundred and forty workers on site as of this month. Clearly, the flotel is not currently operational, and I heard in your presentation that they're bringing folks in from Port Mellon. A few questions on this graph, what do the different colors on the graph mean? So there's the blue, orange, yellow, and gray, and just wasn't totally clear on the differentiation between those different colors.
Yeah, so that kind of just breaks up the different contractors on, for the site. So the blue deals with marine infrastructure. So the consultants on that project right now are Quid and Letcor Bird. And the orange deals with the terrestrial work. However, I do not have the contractors for that portion.
That's fine, but those are all folks who are expected to live on the flotel once it is operational. Is that correct?
Through the chair, yes, that is correct.
Okay, and so just curious, especially in these first years, is there expected to be additional capacity as, from what I can see in terms of rooms on the flotel relative to demand from this particular portion of the project?
Through the chair, at this time, it looks as though there would be additional capacity initially. And right now, I believe W L N G and Fortis is in discussion concerning if that capacity could be used for contingency planning. There is a Fortis T U P as well, as counsel knows, that is being advanced at the same time.
Wonderful. Thank you for that clarity. Excuse me. My second question is, do we know to date if there are going to be any noise exemption permits sought from the District of Squamish for the flotel for any components of it?
Through the chair, there has been one noise permit granted for the marine infrastructure being constructed for the flotel. But the flotel itself, the applicants haven't notified the district that they were seeking any noise permits. Great.
And then with respect to our temporary use permit process, the length of a T U P is at the discretion of counsel. But I am curious if they have put in a request for a length of time. So typically, it's up to three years with the possibility of a three-year renewal. Have there been discussions with the applicant for the length of time that they're pursuing for this application?
Through the chair, there, there wasn't a specific timeframe included in the application. However, the applicants are looking to have the flotel for the entire duration of the construction for the project. Conversations with the applicant, they were not able to provide a specific end date in twenty twenty-seven for when the flotel would be decommissioned?
So it's likely that even if a three-year permit were granted, it would still require an extension of some degree. And we recently updated our temporary use permit process and delegation authority, especially for renewals. And so I'm just curious where this would sit for a renewal, if it would need to come back to council or if that's a delegated authority?
Through the chair, if counsel chooses, we can write into the conditions of the permit that it would need counsel's approval to be renewed?
Thank you. One final question from my end, and this is a recognized tangential to the temporary use permit application itself, but it is included in the project description package. So section A one-three speaks to the economic benefits to local businesses to contract services to the flotel and references condition thirteen of their E A certificate, which requires them to design and deliver programs that support local and indigenous procurement services. I'm just curious if the proponent has provided any further detail on how they intend to realize these benefits. I think we're starting to hear from the business community that they are not actually being included in procurement services. And so I'm just curious if we have any further details from the proponent on how they anticipate actually actioning condition thirteen of their E A.
Thank you for the question. So the, the scope of that is covered with under the Community Service and Infrastructure Management Plan. And details could be provided as an outcome in, as part of reporting for the C S M. Staff can ask or request additional information concerning procurement opportunities, training, and local business participation in the operation of the flotel on behalf of council. And come back to council with that information.
Thank you. I think that would be helpful. There are definitely questions that I'm getting from community members and business members. So I would like to see that more broadly. I'll go back to Mayor Herford and then looking for anybody else who has additional questions. Go ahead.
Thank you. This, without the actual terms, like the, the permit in front of us to look at the exact details, I have to ask sort of more general questions around. So this.
I've heard from other communities that have had big infrastructure projects like this occur in their community and often it takes more people and more time. To what degree is kind of varies depending on on the on the project. And I know that all that I can I need to assume that you know, all projects do with best planning and best numbers. So with the permit, are will the language speak to the maximum capacity of the vessel or that the vessel exists? And like, how do we regulate that? Is it that a vessel can exist for folks to live on? Or does it in the permit itself, does it explicitly say the maximum number of occupants? Or like, how do we track the the because those could be two different things if if it's ends up being able to have double occupancy. I don't I don't know whatever that is, but what does that look like? And how do you like? How did how would you pay for that? Like, will it be explicit number or or other?
Go ahead, Mr. Valanescus.
Thank you. Through the chair. It's not unusual for temporary experiments to have conditions such as maximum capacity or maximum floor area. So I expect that once we have the permit ready for council consideration, there may be a condition in there about around maximum capacity.
Okay, thank you. The there was a discrepancy earlier on in the in the numbers, which I which I accept the staff explaining the presentation around a renovation that led to the reduced number that we're seeing now. But I think having a clear clearly articulating what that maximum is would be would be really helpful. And then Counselor Stoner touched on the the term requested and for the for the T U P. And I was wondering, a lot of the plans for for this, a lot of the approvals for this project by other agencies, say, develop a plan to achieve this goal and and so on. But what remedies does the community have should this permit be issued, but the mitigation plans, those other plans don't end up being effective? Like, is it a condition of, is it this permit itself? Or how does that look? And I could think of some mechanisms out that perhaps a shorter initial permit with a a one-year T U P with a three-year renewal or or something like that, like how do, is that something that that we should be considering? And if so, is that already baked into the temporary use permit? Or is that something that we need to that we may want to consider introducing?
Go ahead, Mr. Valanescus.
Thank you. Through the chair. It will be up to council's discretion to approve the permit or not based on the proposed timeline. With sort of unusual or or uses that we haven't had a lot of experience with, and I would say that this is certainly one of them. It's not uncommon to have a shorter period of time as kind of like a testing period to make sure that the the permit conditions are effective. So I think it will depend on the level of comfort, the kind of completeness of all the submissions and checking the checkboxes on on the application by the time we get to council for a decision on how long of a permit staff would recommend council approve.
Go ahead, Ms. Mulligan.
Just to remind council that despite being able to provide a shorter or shorter duration, if the permit needs to be renewed, it can only be renewed one time and for a maximum duration of three years.
Thank you. I have Counselor Penningill, then Counselor French, and then if possible, I'd like to move to comments.
Thank you. Just in a lot of the proponent marketing, the forthcoming gender safety plan, I believe it's still forthcoming, is is identified as a reason to feel comfortable about supporting the flotel. I haven't seen it yet. Do we know when this will be available and you know, if it will come with independent reviews of of, you know, from experts or or what the plans are there?
Through the chair, our understanding right now is the plan has been submitted to the Environmental Assessment Office, who is reviewing it. There is a requirement for to for the plan to be approved by the Environmental Assessment Office. Therefore, the rigor of the review is extensive by the Environmental Assessment Office. And through that process, the district can provide feedback as one of the consulted parties. My understanding is that the plan would be made available publicly and posted on the Epic site once approved and potentially with on with on the applicant site as well.
Okay, thanks. I'll sneak in a quick comment. I mean, this is framed again by the proponent as a key sort of element of this. And so being able to see this and digest it and so on before we make a decision, I think, would be important to me as part of my considerations. I also noticed it looking at the EAO amendment, Environmental Assessment Office Amendment for the flotel, a new condition was added or an element was added to condition 14. The holder must establish a committee to engage District of Squamish and its community organizations no less than once per quarter and consult with parties identified in this condition with participation from Fortis B C on issues that impact workforce workforce housing, safety and community services. This must include socioeconomic metrics, quarterly reports and potential cumulative issues arising from concurrent workforce housing interactions between wood fiber L N G and Fortis B C projects and to develop a refer and responsive mitigation measures. So a couple of questions. Has this started? Who gets to choose who from the community is involved and and what is happening here? Because I haven't, I still have yet to see these cumulative impact analysis and mitigations that are planned or any of that. Is any of this happened yet?
Thank you. Through the chair, to my knowledge, we haven't participated in a joint table of that nature. There are separate tables dealt with through the Fortis B C E G P project and the W L N G projects, which do address community issues and are tied to the community, the C simp.
Thank you. Counsel French, go ahead.
Thanks, Chair. Our suggest or the the staff recommendation is indicating a potential public hearing date of April the 23rd. What prevents the temporary use public hearing from being scheduled sooner like April 2nd, April 9th or the 16th?
Through the chair, there are public notification requirements around T U Ps. We need to publish in the paper in two preceding newspapers prior to the public hearing as well as our internal reviews of reports to council take about three weeks.
There's also a consideration of space constraints. This will publicly not be held in council chambers and so finding an appropriate space to hold a public hearing is also can be challenging within our community. And our agenda planner is very full, all the way out until as far as I can see. So that's part of it as well. Any further questions at this point, counsel? Not seeing any. We do have a staff recommendation before us that has two components that the committee received the report in that we direct staff to schedule the April 23rd as the date for the public hearing and issuance decision for a temporary use permit. Would anybody like to move those? Moved by Counselor Hamilton, seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Would anybody like to speak to these motions? Go ahead, Counsel Hamilton.
Thanks very much. The temporary use permit applications for the W L N G flotel is a is a is a major interest to our community. It will have an impact on our community, not just our community, but communities surrounding us. And I think that staff have done an amazing job of collecting the information from the proponent, keeping council up to date on what the application includes, what the limitations of our considerations are are on this permit. And I think that I look forward to seeing this permit come to a public hearing to hear more from the public on their perspective on this temporary use permit and make a decision on the temporary use permit. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Greenlaw, do you have any comments?
Sure. Just briefly, just thank you to staff for compiling all this information. It's a very important decision for our community and I I look forward to seeing what the public has to say at the public hearing as as soon as we can. Thank you.
I have Counselor Anderson next.
Thank you. I am pleased so far with what I've learned regarding the workforce housing strategy of wood fiber L N G. With respect to the flotel, we've come a long way since the Mona Lisa during the Olympics, which did have some issues, not least environmental issues in our estuary during herring spawning season. The Soraco One strategy isn't a good one and important one. It's important to have key operations management and engineering personnel reside here in Squamish. We should all be interested in the low turnover and continuity of senior personnel. High salary people will become part of the community. During an earlier period of housing shortage, the Wood Fiber Pulp Mill had the same strategy, built a number of houses for key people in the Highlands and elsewhere. With respect to the traffic impact assessment, I understand comments have already been provided to W L N G, but I am finding that the description of the safety issue of the highway reentry from Site B onto Highway 9 to be inadequate and unclear. There are further aspects here that need to be brought out in the open. It is not only an issue of limited availability of gaps to the northbound and southbound highway traffic, but visibility for drivers who must look in three directions and constantly be on the watch for U-turns being made by suddenly in front of them by southbound Gondola traffic. There is impacts of workers currently living in the community is referenced in some correspondence from community organization representatives who are here today. I'd just like to make a few comments on this matter. Some of those workers currently living in the community are Squamish Nation community members. Others are second and third generation wood fiber families worked at the pulp mill. They're longtime Squamish residents. They include the the long, the oldest company, family-owned company in the corridor and many outstanding citizens and contributors to Squamish. So overall, what I've seen so far, I'm happy to see this take our take our next steps with this approval process. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Mayor Hurford and Counsel French.
Thank you. This the EA conditions that facilitated this this discussion, the amendment that came out in November, I believe, I believe it was. I think it was a step was a step forward and addressed some concerns that that this that this council put forward through U B C M process and and so on. So I think there was, I was happy to see that that progress there. At this point, there's still a few the outstanding plans that were that were mentioned in the in the report, I think, are are very important. And it is a bit more than a little frustrating to to see that we need to drag Fortis and W L G together for joint planning and traffic modeling as an example, as an example of that here. I think that these two entities working to achieve the goals of the overall project would be well served to to move closer together as far as their planning goes to help us understand it and to help the public understand it as well. When I look at the the modeling of the of the workforce, I get that that's a bit of a moving a moving target by both entities, but it does feel that there's the potential for if this permit is ends up being successful, I I would hope that it was full before any spillover effect from the other part of the of the other half of the of the project is felt in the community. So I would encourage the proponents to to work together to, I think that would strengthen the the rationale here for for this piece. The 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 magnitude of permits required, just as I look at this one piece is is quite a lot and and as you step back throughout the 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 process, I think all these layers of of approvals are quite are quite challenging. And you'd think that things would sort of get the details would get finer and finer as they get down to us. But there are some bigger pieces that haven't been addressed at other places of the process that we are now tasked with attempting to address through through our through our processes. So I I appreciate all the work of of staff to get us to get us to this point. And I look forward to having a discussion with this on this topic with our with our community during the next during the next step. And hopefully at that time, we have some more of the missing missing pieces to better inform that conversation and the decision going forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel French. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I'm speaking in favor of the motion. And as the discussion carried on, following Counselor Hamilton's thoughtful suggestion that we loop in our friends on Bowen Island and and then subsequently adding Metro Vancouver. If we're going to do that, I think it's also appropriate for us to loop in the Sunshine Coast Regional District and Gibson's as well. These are neighboring communities that are impacted on the same level as Bowen Island. And also in speaking in favor of this motion, I want to thank those who have attended in the gallery today and specifically thank them for participating in this process in a respectful way. And it's my hope that when we get to hear from our community on April 23rd, that same level of respect will carry through and we'll hear constructive comments from our community during that public hearing.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counsel Penningill.
Yeah, thanks. Apologize if I'm about to misspeak. I'm going quickly to stay with my time. I have a few comments to make. I will be supporting the motion, although I'm at a place where there are some big pieces missing and details. So I'm not sure I'll be able to get to a decision without much of that information, maybe without seeing a draft of the T U P. I think there's some key pieces that I just don't understand well enough yet. And I don't know if we'll have it by the the 23rd. May need some more time to digest, but we'll support the motion and we'll see where we are when we get there. I think for me, the the idea of a shorter temporary use permit makes a lot of sense. And if things are going well, then maybe a renewal. I would definitely want the renewal to come back to council. And and that's sort of one of our only ways to have certainty for our community, to see if things are going well and have some sort of accounting mechanism for ourselves. So I think a shorter approval, if one is forthcoming at first, is is important. Contrary to my colleague, I I see the Soraco occupation of by temporary employees as a significant challenge still. This is being presented by the proponent as a luxury flotel. And so it's a bit frustrating for me to understand why, once a flotel was in place, this couldn't be actually mitigating much more of the housing impact on our community. I've advocated on that for a while. I've heard it from the community and I think it's still a consideration. I think that condition 14 amendment that I spoke about is really important. I think some of those aspects from that committee and having some input into who the committee members are and seeing some of those cumulative impacts in that assessment is is kind of important to this. Maybe I'm mistaken and for some reason it's not relevant to our decision, but to me, it seems very much tied to the impacts of our our housing choice, what housing choice we decide to support. So I would like to see some progress there personally. Now, one of the things, I spent a fair bit of time watching the proponent marketing and they they go to great pains to acknowledge and validate communities' concerns around sexual violence and hopefully the addictions that unfortunately seem to follow work camps. And and so they they use this as a real justification to support this T U P. And if I accept that, and for me, it is one of the more compelling reasons to think maybe this is the better of the ideas we've had, we've heard about. I haven't heard the same thing from Fortis. And so then that leaves this Fortis T U P without any of those mitigations, which it seems that wood fibers identified as quite valid and reasonable. And so maybe to get the the wood fiber T U P, but then the Fortis one, it doesn't actually make sense, given what we're using to justify this one. And so now, like, ultimately, the project needs both. And so I think this is where the coordinated planning and understanding may be important so that we can have something you know, T U P proposals that are actually not contradictory because right now, and I haven't seen the Fortis one yet, so who knows where it'll land. But it seems that putting approving this one for the reasons given by the proponent really puts the Fortis one at risk. And so I'm not quite sure yet what to do with that and how to contemplate that. But I I wanted to flag that for the proponent as something, you know, might be helpful for them to put their minds to on how to resolve.
Thank you, Counsel Penningill. I will make some comments before I called a question. I will support the motions on the floor. Appreciate staff's efforts to pull together all the details for this particular application. all the details for this particular application. And I look forward to hearing from the community at public hearing in terms of where this is supportable. I do think that this has come a long way in addressing many of the concerns that have been raised by our community over time. But there are still some outstanding ones, and there's pros and cons to all of these decisions, and they're not easy. But there are guidelines within which we're making our decisions here for this particular permit, for the temporary use permit. And we will continue to learn as we move towards the public hearing on whether that is sufficient for our community. I do want to support my colleagues' suggestions of referrals to some of our neighboring communities, just realizing the impacts that this will have. Appreciate that it's already gone the S L R D, but I think Bowen makes good sense as well. And echo the continued concerns around the traffic impact assessment study, in particular with the movement to using Site B as a launching pad for those who are based in Squamish, and requiring the right turn to Daryl Bay, that to me, and then the U-turn within that particular area, that already feels unsafe. And so adding even, I think, a few more cars to do that, and the compounding effect of some of the things that are happening in our community, the reality that the gondola is now putting in paid parking, I think we'll see additional use of Daryl Bay by folks, and so it's going to be even busier down there. So just recognizing that that would be helpful to have some mitigating factors there. And to continue to urge the proponent with the efforts that have been made to put forward this application, and some of the language in their project description, that they're holding a really high standard for themselves, for their subcontractors and their contractors, that to me, that extends to Fortis. And I know that they continue to see this as two separate projects, but there is a contract for Fortis to supply liquefied natural gas to this particular facility so that they can export it. And it seems unusual to me that they wouldn't hold that same standard to Fortis for their same workforce accommodations. And so that's something that I'm still challenged with, not particularly with respect to this particular application, but generally within this project. With that, seeing no other hands around the table, I will call to question on the motion on the floor, that is to receive the report and direct staff to schedule the April 23rd date as the public hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, folks, we will take a quick five-minute break, just to let folks reorganize themselves, and we can switch chairs. I'll pass it over to Acting Acting Mayor.
Coming out of left field. Okay, so just going to be presenting, Councillor Stoner, CAO, Ms. Glende, the GM of Public Safety, Megan Latner, to present on the update on Federation of Canadian Municipalities: Partnerships for Municipal Innovation, Women in Local Leadership Project, and Exchange to Zambia. Take it away. Thank you.
Thank you. Through the Chair, Linda Glende, CAO here at the District of Squamish. My pronouns are she/her, so you can address me accordingly. The team that's before you had the opportunity to travel to Zambia as part of this project last June. However, it is a five-year project that the district is a part of. We are partners with the Federation of Canadian Municipalities in this project. So we will give you an update on the project generally, and then some insight into the learning exchange that we participated in in Zambia last summer. So some background and context, it's not a contest. The project, as I mentioned, is run by the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, and it is funded through Global Affairs Canada. So these international projects and capacity building internationally in a municipal context is funded by Global Affairs but implemented through FCM. The purpose of the PMI Will, as it's affectionately called by its acronym, is to increase the participation of women as leaders in, as decision-makers in local governance, so elected officials essentially, and increase local governments generally in terms of their ability to deliver inclusive, gender-responsive services. As I mentioned, it's a five-year project. There are five countries involved, but Squamish is involved with supporting Zambia only. Oh, this is where I've got to do the, there we go. In terms of the development areas, or where they're developing capacity, I should say it better, is, you know, in terms of the effectiveness of the local governments on the right there. So they want an enabling environment for inclusive local governance, so to encourage women and also marginalized folks in the local municipalities in these countries to participate more, and also receive and engage with the local government in terms of their services. So increasing the capacity of the municipalities to deliver services, and increase the capacities of the citizens who are women and marginalized, to take advantage of those services. They do that by increasing participation of women primarily, and that includes, as I mentioned, women in local office, women on the staff side of it, and then networking, and as well as public engagement that includes women and marginalized folks. That's going to be better. So three ways that the FCM project develops this capacity in the municipalities in Zambia is the country we're supporting. One is what we're referring to as the oversea exchange or learning exchange, and we will give you an update on what that was like last June. They host what are called study tours. We have yet to do that with this project in Squamish, but for those of you that were here and remember, when Squamish supported a similar project in Jordan around gender inclusivity and building municipal capacity in Jordan, Squamish hosted a delegation from that country, as well as elected officials from Cambodia. And in fact, Councillor Stoner was with us, and we hosted those individuals that day in Squamish. And it was really quite meaningful for both Squamish and the individuals that came here. And then the last, and probably most important in terms of impact around, like over the course of the five years, is remote technical assistance. So as we all know, and now love, being on Teams and Zoom and different ways, we are able to continue to engage in this project and support remotely. And we did that quite a bit with Jordan, particularly because we supported that project through the pandemic, and continue to do so with this project in Zambia. In terms of partnership, Squamish is not the only Canadian municipality involved. So the city of Edmonton, as well as the town of Comox. So when we work with FCM and the Local Government Association of Zambia, we are often doing so with our colleagues from both Edmonton and the town of Comox. And before I pass you over, Councillor Stoner is going to speak about the learning exchange that happened in Zambia. In terms of mutual learning, there's always a ton that we learn from the municipalities in the exchange country, but we also have had the benefit of learning both from Comox and the city of Edmonton. And Edmonton particularly has a designated department about gender inclusivity. And so that's been fabulous for those of us here in Squamish to learn from our colleagues there.
Thank you very much, Councillor Jenna Stoner, here on the other side of the table to provide some presentation. It is fun on this side of the table. Thanks so much to Ms. Glende for the introduction on this project and the history behind it. As mentioned, and as folks know, last summer, Megan, Linda, and I had the opportunity to travel to Zambia with two colleagues from the city of Edmonton, with the intent of meeting the local project delivery partner, which was the Local Government of Zambia, the Local Government Association of Zambia, and the five Zambian municipal counterparts that are participating in this project. Through that work and that learning exchange, there was a delivery of two days of training workshops that were focused on gender participatory public engagement and municipal service delivery and analysis. And so two workshops were delivered concurrently in two different locations. So the five of us that traveled from Canada were split up into two groups. Three of us traveled to north in the country, and then two other folks had a bit of an easier trip, just a half hour outside of the capital, to deliver these workshops to five different local governments in Zambia who are participating. The workshops themselves were delivered by local consultants, which was extremely helpful in terms of providing some of the context with respect to what can often be a bit of a sensitive topic in terms of gender and gender inclusivity, and making sure that the cultural tones were correct. And then our role as Canadian municipal partners was really about supporting the delivery of the workshops by sharing our experiences, the lessons learned, and best practices that were relevant in our context, and then working with the local consultants in order to make sure that what we know in our context is also relevant in the context in Zambia, and supporting that translation a little bit. So in total, between the two workshops, there were 50 participants, five communities, as I mentioned, and 10 staff from each of the communities. And the workshop content, this is just a bit of an overview, included gender equity key concepts, a bit of a focus on gender-based analysis, and this is where our colleagues from the city of Edmonton really stepped up. They are probably one of the forefront in Canada, at least in terms of applying the lens of gender-based analysis, and what that really looks like in terms of their policy development and implementation. We did a full section on participatory public engagement, and Linda in particular, and Megan, so we were separated. Linda and I went with one other, with Sharon from the city of Edmonton, and Megan went with Courage from the city of Edmonton. And Megan and Linda really stepped up and actually delivered some of the training. up and actually delivered some of the training or a version thereof on the International Association of Public Participation, the IAPT framework that we use here in Squamish. We had some discussion around committee structures, as well as reaching out and engaging women in marginalized groups in public engagement, and some of the things that have worked well here. For example, just even like providing childcare for public engagement processes, and how that can really change the tone of public engagement. And then we did some group activities for planning local engagement on a community-by-community basis, and did some activities with the folks in the workshop. So this is just a bit of context, geographic context, for where the two training locations were held. So the Kafue team, which Megan was part of, were located about 30 minutes outside of Luusaka, which is the capital. And so that's the star at the bottom of the map that you see. While the Mansa team, which Linda and I were on, traveled about eight hours, required taking two additional domestic flights to get to the north end in Mansa, which is the star at the top, kind of close to the border with Congo. And these are just a few pictures from the Mansa portion of the trip. The first one is taken from the airplane's window, pretty flat, dry, arid land, but really beautiful landscape. In addition to the workshops that were held in Mansa, we then had one day to be able to travel to one of the participating communities, Chifanabuli, and meet with mostly their staff. The picture on the top far right was with, you'll see Linda and I, and in the middle is the mayor of the town where we were hosting the workshops. And so we did a bit of an introductory opening with him. The woman on the left is the president of the Local Government Association of Zambia. And then that's Sharon from the city of Edmonton. And then on the far right is the FCM PMI Will project coordinator who is based in Ghana. Is that right?
That's right.
Yeah, and so it was just really fascinating to get to learn and meet from a variety of folks on the ground in terms of really seeing what some of their challenges were. One of the really interesting things that I think I took away, and this middle picture shows us standing with some of the staff from Chifanabuli, their equivalent to their CAOs are actually appointed by their equivalent to their provincial government. So they're not hired by their local governments. They are actually appointed, and they are moved on a very frequent basis, like often like every 18 months to two years. So you can imagine how difficult that would be in terms of developing a staff-to-council relationship. On the bottom right-hand side, there's a picture of the robe, so they get to wear robes in council chambers. Just something that I'll throw out there, maybe somebody would want to take. We can all have dress code. Linda, do you have anything you'd like to add from the Mansa trip?
Yes, as much as the travel was challenging, it was a great opportunity to get to a place that otherwise you wouldn't generally, in a country like that, certainly. And the folks there were quite appreciative that we had made the trip. And as I mentioned with the Jordan project, I found the same, is that I always learn more from them than I feel like I'm contributing, which is why FCM used to call these missions. And in the context of inclusivity and decolonization, our colleagues, Sharon and Courage, did a very good job of working with FCM. And now they're called exchanges or learning exchanges. And I think that that's a much better categorization. Around the appointment of the CAO was very interesting. I spoke to, I believe, the woman in the picture, that's middle top, in the middle, beside Jenna is the CAO there. And very briefly, I got to speak to her one-on-one, and the challenge of being moved every two years when you have a family, particularly as a female CAO, because in Zambia, not so unlike Canada, the females still do the lion's share of the work, whether you're working full-time or not. And so I don't think her family had moved with her, and so she was away. And it's a really challenging career, but she still loves it and was extraordinarily passionate about it. She also said that the rationale for that is to prevent corruption, because if a CAO is too long in a town and gets too friendly with people, the opportunity for corruption is high, or used to be high, and I found that quite fascinating. And so some ways, it's very similar, you know, like in terms of her challenges with moving and managing her family. And then in other ways, it's so different, because that's not something that comes up for us here.
Thank you. My name is Megan Latner. I'm the general manager of public safety. And so myself and one of our partners from the city of Edmonton, Courage Bobongfang, we traveled to Kafue. And although it is located about 30 minutes outside of the outskirts of Luusaka, if anyone has been to Luusaka, the traffic there is pretty horrendous. So what should be a 30-minute drive was normally around, on average, four hours to be able to actually get from point to point. So we were very generously hosted by the District of Kafue staff, as well as their council. We also spent two days in workshops with the staff there, with about 10 general managers and directors. We also had the opportunity to visit their town hall, which was very grand. It was sort of an Art Deco building from the 60s, but they toured us around. You can see up on the right, in the middle there, that's a picture of their council chambers. What you can't see in that photo is the public gallery all around. And it's two levels, actually. So they even have a nosebleed section when they have a high number of public participants. In the center, on the bottom there, is all of the workshop participants. So that's all the staff that were participating in the workshops. And then the mayor of Kafue is in the center in the front there as well. We had the opportunity to meet with her on our last day there, and just to better understand some of the different political issues that are top of mind in Kafue. And then on the left, on the left bottom, that's actually outside of the town hall in Kafue, with some of the participants of the workshop as well. Let's go to the next slide here. Thank you, Linda. So there were a number of different learnings and takeaways that we had from our visit to Zambia. They're sort of along three main themes. So the first that I think was really interesting for all of us is that a lot of the challenges that our counterparts in Zambia, in local government, are facing are very similar to some of the things that we face here, despite the different context and socioeconomic differences. And so, you know, in terms of what my colleagues here have mentioned, women's participation in government is also a challenge there. That's really what this project is centered around, is trying to improve the capacity there. Also, we discussed a lot about some of the challenges around public engagement and really doing true participatory public engagement around different issues. And then finally, in terms of challenges, just the really high expectations of community members, especially in a place that's rapidly growing. So many of municipalities in Zambia have rapid growth, similar to Squamish, and high demands in terms of different services that they are expecting of their government, and then just the challenge in terms of being able to deliver that in the capacity constraints along those lines. The second main learning that we found was, although we'd had a little bit of engagement online, some training online beforehand, being able to actually travel there and meet face-to-face with our counterparts in the Zambian local governments was so valuable, and having that peer-to-peer connection, and be able to discuss, as I mentioned, some of those similar challenges that we're facing, and also just how we're navigating different issues in our communities was extremely valuable. And then finally, in terms of learnings, the Local Government Association of Zambia, our partner on the ground there, they were able to contract several local facilitators for the workshops. And this was really invaluable in terms of being able to translate some of the workshop materials that were coming from the Canadian partners into that local context. And the facilitators that were contracted, it was actually really interesting. They all worked as professors in one of the local colleges for public administration. So all local government staff actually go through these colleges for public administration, where they're trained on how to work in local government. So it's very centralized education. So we had these facilitators that were absolutely invaluable in terms of their knowledge of political processes and the Zambian context. They were able to help translate some of that material into something that was relevant for the participants themselves.
I'll just jump in with one example of the shared challenges around communication. I had a few very detailed conversations about just the challenge of trying to communicate what a local government does and the services that they provide to their residents, and how best to effectively do that, like the challenges of websites, and do you use the local radio, and who listens to the radio, and how do you actually get your message out? And then also a lot of challenges around misinformation on social media. So despite really substantially different socioeconomic contexts, the baseline challenges of explaining what local government does and trying to get your citizens to understand the services that you're providing and the constraints under which you're providing them was very common across. And when I mentioned, yeah, we have a similar challenge, like we often get lots of questions, or people don't know that we're doing this particular program, and we're constantly trying to innovate on how we engage more with our community. They were, I think, actually quite, like, heartwarming to hear that we also had similar challenges to them, and that sometimes company loves misery, even though you might feel like we have it all figured out here. They were like, oh, okay, well, you don't actually have it figured out. And their access to internet is actually probably much greater than it is across our province. And even if you think up the valley, there's not consistent internet access, whereas there, it's at the tips of the majority of folks' fingers.
Thank you. That was a great example. And so since our visit to Zambia, we've been continuing to provide some support remotely. So each of the municipalities, as part of the project, is preparing a project that will look at service delivery and public engagement. And so that will be the focus for the next two years of the project overall. And so there's been a number of different proposals that each municipality has put forward. They're focusing generally on projects around water delivery, solid waste management, and then development of some skills and vocational training centers, as well as a mental health support hub. And that's actually something that I should mention, is although there are very similar challenges for the local governments there, as well as for here, in terms of their service delivery, it's even broader than what we provide. So they're also providing services around health, as well as education within their local government. So some additional pressures there for them to manage. For our continued support over the next couple of years of the remaining project period, so we'll continue to provide that remote technical assistance that I just described. So we have had a look at those proposals, and we'll be providing some input and commentary on that. There is the potential for our Zambian counterparts to be coming to Squamish to visit, as well as potentially Edmonton and Comox. So that's still to be determined, but hopefully we will be able to welcome them and show them around Squamish on a visit in the future. And then there are additional study tours planned and exchanges planned for staff from Squamish, Edmonton, and Comox to go back to Zambia as well, to continue to support the projects on the ground over there as part of the overall project. So I'll finish there, and we'll turn it back over to council if there's any questions.
Thanks, Megan. Sorry, through the chair, if I could just add, because I forgot to put this into my introduction as a reminder, the funding for this work is from a grant from Global Affairs Canada, and everything, like our travel, in-kind support. So any time that we dedicate to this project while we're here is reimbursed by FCM. The difference is when we're there on an exchange, our time there is not. So for Megan and I, our wages while we were there was paid by the District of Squamish. So that's District of Squamish's support in kind back to the project, but everything else is covered through FCM.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for that presentation. Like, from my experience, there's just so much to learn from traveling abroad, especially in this context, where you're kind of doing it within a work context, and you can see how different the two systems are. There's so much value in just seeing how other systems like this function. I'm not sure if I find it comforting or further frustrating that we have similar challenges around messaging and misinformation. But with that, I'll open it up for questions. I will point out that we have about four minutes left, according to our agenda, but I feel like it's the last subject of the day. So I'm going to extend it by 15 minutes, unless there's any objections. So councillors and mayors, I'll start with councillor Anderson.
Thank you. As you've emphasized, Ms Glende, this is an investment on our part, on FCM's part and Global Affairs. Did you feel that you have opportunity to give feedback regarding this program for evaluating, ongoing evaluation, its administration, the development ongoing of our Canadian offering?
Great question. Thank you. Yes, absolutely. And in fact, that was a big component of, while we were there in Zambia, there was, I think it was a Teams meeting where we provided feedback right away after the week that we were there. And then since then, we've had meetings with the project managers of FCM to give feedback. And there have been areas that required improvement and continue to, that they are very open to hearing and making shifts.
Thanks, Mayor Harper.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Super interesting, and just the different configurations that local governments can take alone is fascinating. The appointed CAO piece from the province, I'm using air quotes, whatever that mechanism is, just made me think about, given the five-year nature of this project, is the relationship with the community, or is the relationship with the individual CAO that moves on, or both? Or was this the catalyst for making those connections, and then now it's with those people? And how is that managed? Because that's another complication, or another wrinkle in it.
Interesting that you asked that, because I asked the same question, like, what's going to happen to these projects if CAOs are coming and going? But that's unfortunately, well, that's just what happens. So the woman that we met in Chifanabuli likely wouldn't be there to see the end of the municipal initiatives. So the partnership was with the Local Government Association of Zambia, who then, there was an entire application process and vetted and chose five municipalities. So it's the municipalities themselves, regardless of how many CAOs come through.
Well, thank you. I think that little snippet just highlights the complexity of the task that they have there. And so thank you for that.
Thanks. Councillor Pettigill?
Yeah, thanks. Just sort of hearing the descriptions and seeing the pictures and so on, it appears as if Zambia must be much further along in its decolonization, or maybe colonization wasn't as entrenched to begin with. I'm just wondering, though, did you see parallels to, you know, the reconciliation? I would say we're in the early stages of here versus where they are and what they're struggling with? Are they really quite different circumstances?
An interesting question. And I think we're all hesitating in terms of, it's one of the components where I think like having the local facilitators is extremely helpful in terms of contextualizing some of the work that we were doing, and also perhaps putting some guardrails in terms of the questions that we were asking. I actually don't know where they're at in terms, it wasn't a topic of conversation that came up around decolonization, and where they stand in that component of their journey as a nation. So I can't respond to that specifically. I don't know if you folks had any specific conversations. We did get into some really in-depth conversations. As Megan mentioned, local governments are also responsible for health and for education, and with a focus health and for education, and with a focus on gender equity, some of the sensitivity in the conversation was actually around, well, where we were in Mansa was around cultural and sexual safety for women, in particular on the border with Congo. And so a very different form of the conversation than what your question was leading to. But there's, yeah, it's not on a reconciliation component, it wasn't part of the conversations that I had, but definitely some more very vivid conversations on other challenges that perhaps are not quite as forefront in our communities.
Thanks. Any other questions? Councillor French?
I'm curious to, thank you, to know how the two communities compared to us, Comox and Edmonton, from a basic population size and makeup.
I can speak to Kafue, and I'll let my colleagues speak to the other four. But Kafue, it's actually quite a large municipality. It's about 220,000 people, and I would say relatively affluent and well-educated compared to maybe other parts of Zambia, just because of their proximity to the capital. So, you know, good access to education institutions and things like that. Their focus there is mostly, like, their economy is mostly based on agriculture. However, they are diversifying into some heavy industry, iron and steel, as well as tourism, and also renewable energy, which is interesting. They took us actually to a solar farm on our way to the Kafue headquarters while we were driving there from Lusaka. So we had an opportunity to see that as well.
When councillor Stoner and I and Sharon from Edmonton traveled north to Mansa, I would say that the context was very, very different than Kafue. The four municipalities that we worked with, we only saw one. We visited Chifanabuli, and then where we worked with them in Mansa itself was tiny, but they had a facility where everyone traveled to join. So the four municipalities that we worked with, I can't speak right now to say population, but I'm going to say small and rural. So Chifanabuli, where we visited, what struck me the most was as we drove in towards municipal hall. So we started going by, was it a lake? Or it was a lake, really large, long lake where fishing occurred. And there were like little wooden sort of shanties where fishermen and fisherwomen and their families lived, really rough, and like right up on the water. And then you kept going, and then the houses were a little bit more rustic, and then kept going, and then you got into the big stone houses with fences around them. And it was probably not all that different from Canada, just starkly different, because it's Africa from the actual buildings, but rural, and then sort of into like the outskirts, and then the affluent. And then we drove by the mission, which looked very different. Again, it was all red brick and very specific. And you talk about colonization, that was a lot of the conversation we heard was about like the religious missions that came into Africa, and that was really what was striking a chord for most people when we had conversations. And then the municipal hall area itself was like, you know, there was no asphalt, it was all dirt, and pretty rustic buildings, and rather rural. And I would say that the industry was more like agriculture, fishing, rural type. Yeah.
Yeah. And like, as one of the slides shows, in terms of ongoing support for some of the services that the participating municipalities are looking to provide, like basic access to water and sewer is like probably the first thing that folks are trying to figure out how to do. And probably different in Kafue, but in the four rural governments that we were working with, was definitely, those were the primary components that they were focused on, was how do you get water and sewer to the majority of our residents?
Sorry, just because I'm starting to remember and get passionate again. But the women generally are the ones tasked with getting the water. And so when you talk about a gender difference in a rural area where the women have to walk miles and miles, or kilometers and kilometers, to get the water, that's really a massive impact on their productivity, their ability to look after their family, their own dignity, because there's no washroom facilities. So that's when you really see this stark difference in the communities, is in the rural ones.
Councillor Pettigal?
So I think I heard earlier that their internet access and so on may be well ahead of ours. Is that true in the places where some of the other infrastructure is lacking? And so there's sort of a, interesting.
Yeah, the internet access is above and beyond, and it's relatively cheap, even if you don't have access to water and sewer. You have 50 gigabytes of data, no problem.
Well, that's always very interesting, right, to hear. I was just wondering, does anybody else have any other questions? Yeah, Mayor Herbert?
Sorry, just one of the next steps, it said Squamish study tour, the question mark? Just, do we have any idea of timelines, question mark, around that? I think that's something that's quite an exciting piece, and the community would like to know about it. When would we be hearing more on those next steps that we might actually like see in our community?
We don't know, to be perfectly honest. In fact, the last learning exchange was supposed to happen in February, but it was delayed because of cholera in Zambia. So there's some local concepts that are context issues that are preventing travel right now.
Okay, thanks. And just out of curiosity, what was the gender breakdown of representation in the municipalities that you were working with, like in terms of their elected officials?
In terms of elected officials, and I can just speak to a few of the folks that I spoke to from two of the communities, none of the folks who were participating in the workshops were elected officials. It was all staff. And the two municipalities that I spoke to, one had three females, so out of six. And then the other one didn't have any female representation on council.
Yeah. And then in Kafue, they had quite a large council. I think it was about twenty people sit on their council, and a woman mayor. I think she was the first woman mayor for Kafue, so a big milestone for them. But I don't believe there were any other female or woman counselors on the political side. And then within the workshop, it was roughly fifty-fifty in terms of women and men participating from the staff side.
Interesting. All right. Well, thank you very much for that presentation. It was fascinating. It's really interesting to see what's going on on that side, like the very external stuff that Squamish is doing. And I look forward to hearing more about the potential of them coming here, or doing some international travel themselves. I think that would be, well, I just think international travel is immensely beneficial. So thank you so much for the presentation. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to receive. Okay. Mayor Herbert is seconded by councillor French. Okay, and then a motion to terminate? No? Oh, sorry. Votes, yes, all in favor. A receipt? There you go. Oh, no councillor. Yeah, there you go. You got it. Unanimous. Now we're motioning to terminate? I'm just going to do it super slowly. I'm going with councillor Stoner, seconded by councillor Hamilton. That's some gender bias right there. Thanks. What, everybody in favor? All in favor? Yeah, there you go.